Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to Wednesday, March 6, 2024, a regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we begin this meeting thanking you for who you are, and we thank you for your great love that you have for each and every one of us. And today, we pray a special blessing for the February retirees of Hillsborough County. We ask you to bless the retirements of public utilities, Brian Matthews, Mark Kreip, Charles Coleman, Randy Garcia, and Head Start Marta Rodriguez, Development Services Betty Norregas. And we ask you to bless their lives and all that concerns them. We pray that they will prosper and be in health and that their soul would prosper. And we pray a special blessing for everyone that lives in Hillsborough County, and we ask you to bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. This morning, we have one very special commendation, and Commissioner Myers will present it.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Will the following persons please come to the podium? Lee Lowry, Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women, Marsha Passmore, and Alex Good morning, and welcome to you all. The Hillsborough County Women's Hall of Fame was created in 2011 by the Commission on the Status of Women. Every year, the Hall of Fame honors women who through their outstanding lives and efforts has made significant contribution to the improvement of life for the women in all residents of Hillsborough County. This year, two amazing Hillsborough County women join the prestigious rank of their fellow peers today to present this commendation, which recognizes their dedication and remarkable achievement. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioner applauds the Hillsborough County Commission on Status of Women for honoring women whose contribution has lasting positive impacts and recognize Marsha Passmore and Alex Sink for their induction into Hillsborough County Women's Hall of Fame. Since the 1970s, Ms. Passmore has dedicated her life to service, most notably working with the Business and Professional Women's Club, serving on the Plant City Commission, and being the recipient of the Plant City's Young Careers Award for her work in business community. The former president of Florida Operations for Nation Bank, now Bank of America, Ms. Sink serves four years as the Second Chief Financial Officer for the state of Florida and has made tremendous drive for our community and state throughout her work with numerous organizations, including the United Way Sun Coast, Florida Next, and Tampa Bay Wave, leading her to earn the 2020 Bob Graham Center for Public Service Citizen of the Year Award." The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, thus hereby commend Marsha Passmore and Alex Sink for their remarkable achievements and service, and encourage the community to celebrate these distinguished women executed the sixth day of March 2024. My staff? Okay. Oh, we can clap, it's okay, we're in the boardroom. And now, Ms. Lowry, I'm going to ask if you will say a few words, please.
Okay, well, I don't want to take too much time, because these wonderful ladies should say something as well, but I am Lee Lowry, I'm the Chair of the Commission on Status of Women, very honored to have that role. I have with me today two of our board members, Mindy Murphy, who represents the Spring, and Dottie Groover-Skinner, who was appointed by Commissioner Ken Hagan. I was appointed by Commissioner Wostol, thank you so much for that, but it's a wonderfully diverse group. We're both appointed by commissioners and representatives of nonprofits and organizations in the area that are in the status of women, so I'm very grateful for those folks. We do have a wonderful luncheon that we'll be doing on March 20th for these ladies to honor them, so we welcome you all to join us for that as well, and I think they're allowed to say a few words.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I am absolutely so honored, I hope I can say these words without breaking down, but I'm very honored to be here today. I really appreciate the Hillsborough County Commission and the women who have selected me today for this honor. It is such a privilege to serve Hillsborough County. I'm a Plant City girl, so you know what's happening in Plant City right now with strawberries and our strawberry festival, but as far as serving the community, that is my greatest honor. I love my Lord, and so I feel like every day I'm blessed to serve Him, and anything that I do, I want to bring honor to Him. But with my friends here, I have my husband here, Billy, my sister Doty, and Michael, who came from Atlanta to be here today, thank you, and all of the other friends in the room that I have maybe just met, thank you very much for being here today, but for all of you who have honored me for this privilege, it is a privilege and honor to serve all of you as a resident of Hillsborough County and to this commission. I want to call out one of our commissioners now, Michael Owen. He doesn't know I'm going to do this, but he's going to be working tomorrow as an ambassador at the Florida Strawberry Festival, so if any of you want to come out and see him actually working...
I'm not going in the dunk booth, though.
That's the first part of the day, Michael. Anyway, I'm just honored, I try to be silly, I try to bring humor into it, because you know what? Life is not that hard, it's such a pleasure, and for that, I want to thank you all for Thank you so much, I can't tell you what an incredible honor this is, especially when I look at the previous recipients of this award since 2011, and thanks to the Commission on the Status of Women for establishing this award to recognize just a few of the hundreds of thousands of women in this county who participate and contribute. I also want to thank the people, the Tampa Bay Wave, who are, thank you for showing up today, Linda Olson, our founder and chairperson, and our board members, because they nominated me for this award, and I'll have more to say when we get to the luncheon, but to the commissioners, without you, the county commission of this county, making an incredible investment to get the wave started 10 years ago, we would not be where we are today, and I want you to know that in 10 short years, with your support and incredible investment, we have put Hillsborough County on the map as the place to start up a technology business. If you come here, you are not only going to survive, but you're going to thrive, and through that effort and your investment, we've created thousands of jobs here, brought millions and millions of dollars of investment capital, and my hope is that, I'll put in a little plug, that you'll continue to see value in funding the Tampa Bay Wave, and thank you again for this just amazing honor, it's been a privilege.
And I just want to congratulate both of these women as we celebrate Women History Month. You know, you all have not stopped giving back to our community, and service is what we do, and you all have done an excellent job in giving service to our county, and thank you so much. Now let's go back and take our Oscar award.
And Commissioner Myers, we've got a couple speakers here first. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to congratulate you both. Ms. Sink, I don't know you too well, but I know, but I've followed your career, and you're someone I do admire, you're somebody that, when we get elected, partisan politics sometimes takes over, but I've seen you, I've seen the work you do in this community, I've seen you put that stuff aside to do what's right, so well-deserved award, and congratulations. Marsha, 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 Marsha. What can I say? You know, we have strawberry queens, as she alluded to earlier, but then we also have community queens that reign forever, that's you. You are an absolute darling for East County, you're somebody that I get counsel from, whether I like it or not, and I just want you to know that you're my sister in Christ, I love you, and it's a well-deserved award. Thanks.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. I was going to say almost the same thing, I'm not familiar as much with your work, Ms. Passmore, but it sounds like you have a wonderful record, and if you can get Commissioner Owens in the dunking booth, tomorrow we might all be there. Just let us know. And to Alex Sink, and I have been familiar with your work championing economic development in this community for so long, and the Tampa Bay Wave, and it's been a really important work that you've undertaken, and you know, you could easily just walk away and not be doing that, but you haven't been, you've really been a champion in this community for so much that it's deeply, deeply appreciated, your mentoring, your example, and your work in economic development in the community.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you, and I just want to say congratulations and reiterate what my colleagues said, and just also say how wonderful it is to have you here at the beginning of this month, where we are celebrating women. You're both so accomplished and respected in the community, and thank you, Commissioner Myers, for bringing this forward.
Okay, Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, good morning, commissioners. We have one off the agenda item, item F3, submitted by Commissioner Wostol, which is an amendment of the Supervisor of Elections 2024 budget. We have one revision or correction to the agenda, this is the commendation you just heard, commendation presented by Commissioner Gwendolyn Myers on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, recognizing the Hillsborough County Women's Hall of Fame class of 2024. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion or questions by Commissioner Kemp. This is item A43, to approve the proposed agreement with Oakmont Self-Storage, which authorizes the reimbursement of certain costs associated with oversizing water facilities required by the county as a condition of developing the Oakmont Self-Storage. We have a few items for time certain. The first one is item D1 at 10:00 a.m., this is to hold a public hearing on the purchase of the Windermere Utility Private Water and Wastewater Utility System, and to approve the agreement for a negotiated price of $2.5 million. Item C1 at 10:15 is to provide a formal direction for the county administrator and county attorney to take all steps necessary to draft an ordinance to place a renewal of the existing half percent community investment tax, SRTAX, on the November 2024 ballot. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Move approval?
Got a motion to approve the changes. Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, the board will go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern, or your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members, however it is requested. At the same time, when you address the board, the comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call on speakers by name, and the order in which the requests to speak have been received. When addressing the board, please state your name, speak clearly in the microphone, each person will be given three minutes. We do have 24 people that have signed up, so if everyone is here, there's a good chance we will not have an opportunity to hear from everyone this morning. First three speakers, David Coleman, followed by Melissa Nordbeck, and then Gil Martinez.
Good morning, David Coleman. The choices couldn't be more clear as we move forward in an election year. Never fighting for our transportation tax money and having to stand us dole it out as if we were children. Meanwhile, Pasco passed three taxes in 10 years for transportation, but it's out of your hands. 233 dead in the county last year, I took pictures of those white signs last week, 10 recent deaths within a half mile of my home. Never fighting against TECO, its rate hikes, and pollution, out of your hands, but your hands were open as they sponsor your rewards dinner. Your recent attacks on housing and nonprofits now compounded by the early attempt to remove the community investment tax. Please remove the $9 million for the stadium and force Raymond James to do their own league cleanup, keep the millions for our public schools, and what meager amount that the county puts into our transportation needs. Now it seems 600K to an international company to evaluate our Hillsborough County health card. Well, let's take a walk through the ER rooms of our hospitals and talk to the working poor that are doing everything they can to survive, and the health card is saving their lives. What the heck is that bill for Bright House? For that matter, all the other tech agenda items adding up to millions when the county can't even spell their own email address, let alone create one calendar with all the events on it in one place. Bring back the dots, I guess, the cops downstairs can't even figure out what meetings are going on in this building. Record all meetings, make them hybrid, release transcripts, I still want a list of each of your slush fund flag monies. What is this business about 11,000 fewer registered voters early in the process, but the removal of 200K, which would impinge apparently on the ability to have enough monitors at drop boxes? Is the GOP serious about proper elections or not? As the planning commission makes its presentation tomorrow about future look of Hillsborough County, consider that pulling all the resources from a million residents to satisfy East and South County isn't going to fly. Remember that as one of the richest counties in the country, your despicable treatment of the least of us is an affront to what I believe are the ideals this country stands for. Attacks on our LGBTQ, our Hindus, misogynistic rants, ignoring our Muslims, giving cash to Christian-only drug rehabs, attacking our homeless, affordable housing nonprofits, funding for schools, transportation, and elections, raising our garbage bills $85 and doubling our water bills while hanging on so tightly to that $2.3 billion liquid money, while not being transparent and actually aggravated at people that come into this room, except for the Daughters of the Confederacy. Choices are clear this year, it couldn't be more clear. All a matter of a public record, and not one thing I said is not true.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next three speakers, Melissa Nordbeck, followed by Gil Martinez, and then Lorena Rivas Hardwick, virtual. Good morning.
Item A43 on today's consent agenda, which does not allow public comment, you'll be asked to vote on a reimbursement of taxpayer dollars in the amount of $582,501 in one lump sum for an oversized utility line that was never approved by the B OCC prior to the beginning of the project as required by ordinance. An oversized agreement is a legal contract that the county and the developer to agree on the amount of taxpayer reimbursement and to monitor the project to make sure it does not exceed the agreed-upon amount as good stewards of taxpayers' money should. This contract was hastily executed two weeks ago, even though the project started in June of 2022, over a year and a half ago. This is a violation of county ordinance, you cannot draft a retroactive oversized agreement. B OCC approval is required before any work begins. This document has a big blank space where the Chair of the County Commissioner's signature should be. The Taylor Morrison Project in Odessa also started work on an oversized utility over two years ago and does not have an oversized agreement. Their estimated costs were $1.67 million last year, I'm sure that amount has grown. I have no doubt they will expect to be reimbursed with their very own after the fact oversized agreement, because your vote today will have set that precedent, and expose the county to litigation should they not be afforded the same courtesy.
Thank you, Ms. Nordbeck. Gil Martinez, followed by Lorena Rivas Hardwick, and then Edwin Nurein, both are virtual. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Gil Martinez from the Wyomama Community Development Corporation. I'm here to speak today on item G1. On behalf of the CDC of Wyomama, we ask you to consider the prospects of expanding the urban service boundary. The Wyomama CDC asks that you prioritize robust community engagement and seek opportunities to align public and private interests. This expansion represents a significant decision that will shape the future trajectory of our county's development and livability. Therefore, it is essential that we approach this matter with careful consideration and inclusivity. Collaboration between the public sector, private stakeholders, and community organizations is essential to achieving shared goals, maximizing the benefits of expansion while mitigating potential challenges. I urge the county commission to prioritize significant community engagement and opportunities to align public and private interests as we consider the expansion of the USB, particularly privately initiated USB expansion initiatives. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Next speaker, Lorena Rivas Hardwick, virtual.
Yes, good morning, Chair and County Commissioner. My name is Lorena Rivas Hardwick, External Affairs Officer, Feeding Tampa Bay, 4702 North Transport Drive. Wish I could be there in person, but happy to have this opportunity. I'm here to speak on the community investment tax agenda item. Yesterday, your offices received a letter from our CEO, Thomas Mance, on the renewal of the community investment tax. As we all know, CIT provides funding for essential infrastructure projects that improve our county. One of its functions currently is to provide funding for Hillsborough County public schools. And I, along with Feeding Tampa Bay, respectfully request that you keep education as part of future CIT funding. Hillsborough County schools have benefited from $655 million in CIT proceeds. Over 220,000 children attend Hillsborough County public schools, and their parents should expect to send their children into a safe environment, a space that is not overcrowded, and a place that is convenient to the community they live in. I'd like to note that over 35,000 of those kids are living in poverty here in our county. The school becomes a place where they can have a meal, they can learn, and they can grow. We owe it to all the children we serve to provide a safe space that offers them the academic support and resources they need to thrive. Particularly in today's economy, schools need our support. If our schools can no longer benefit from CIT funding, there will be a gap of $244 million for future scheduled projects, because the impact fees they collect are not enough and CIT covers that gap, which means they would have to halt or defer these projects to the detriment of our student population and the 24,000 individuals employed in the district. Feeding Tampa Bay is invested in the future of our youth, as Hillsborough County Schools is our partner in the school pantry program. It is our, sorry, it is our partner in our school pantry program. It is our duty to invest in them, to assist in ensuring the academic success of the student population. Personally, as a mom, I know the struggles of parenting, and I am privileged to have choices of where I can send my child to school, but for many families, that is not an option. So as a parent, and as a representative of my organization, I urge you to keep Hillsborough County public schools as part of this very important discussion. We cannot leave them behind. I thank you all for your time this morning, and I thank you for the work that you're doing to successfully navigate all of the issues that affect Hillsborough County. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next two speakers are virtual, Ed Nurein, followed by Karen Jeroch.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. This is former State Representative Ed Nurein, and I'm calling in today just to encourage you to keep the schools as part of the community investment tax renewal. While I'm involved in many different organizations like the Chamber, the EDC, the Boys and Girls Club, today I am strictly speaking to you as a private citizen, who is also a father and a longtime supporter of public education. The CIT is not a new tax, and we shouldn't debate it as such. As the needs of our community continue to grow, so has the needs for public education. The need for more schools is going to remain ever-present, and I think that many people are mistaken in believing that the 2018 tax referendum dollars can pay for all of the educational needs that currently exist. Just as a reminder, those monies were put aside for the deferred maintenance costs that were backlogged, and successfully, to date, over $740 million worth of projects have been completed at a little over the halfway point. But as the community needs continue to grow, transportation and education remain the region's biggest weaknesses, and we still have a backlog of about $454 million worth of projects, specifically in areas like Plant City and Wyomama, and only some of those projects are going to be able to be covered by the impact fees that we're currently collecting. Sacrificing education is not going to improve our plight, so I'm going to encourage you to keep that 25% mark for our schools in the community investment tax, particularly to secure our children's future. Remember that communities that are not investing in schools today more than likely will be building new jails tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Karen Jeroch, virtual.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, this is Karen Jeroch, and I appreciate the comments of the speaker who just went before me, but I have a different take, I favor eliminating the share of the CIT that currently goes to the schools. In the 30 years since the CIT began, the school board implemented their own full tax to meet their capital needs. I also favor removing stadiums from the list of eligible projects. Let's focus on our infrastructure needs, like public works to include transportation, public safety, and public utilities. Also, I'm opposed to any term longer than 10 years. Let's do what our neighbors do in Pinellas and Pasco and allow voters to reauthorize the tax every 10 years. How are they able to fund their infrastructure in this time and we aren't? Setting a term longer than 10 years is ill-advised. Quote-unquote bonding out the tax essentially means spend it now and have our children and grandchildren pay for it later. Bonding means the county would be taking out a loan with interest payments when the tax proceeds enable us to pay cash and fund more projects with the savings and the invest that we would otherwise pay in interest payments. Bonding is costly, especially with interest rates as high as they are now. From page seven on the February 14 workshop slides, we learned that the county spent $1.1 billion on capital projects over 30 years. More than half of that amount was bonded out early on in the 30-year tax, resulting in a whopping $127 million in interest and debt service fees. To grasp the scale of $127 million of interest payments, this amount was more than the entire 30-year allocations for both parks and recs and the library category. How many fire stations would $127 million have funded? How many miles of sidewalks? With the state budget a done deal, we now know that $256 million of the illegal 2018 tax collections will be allocated to Hillsborough County for road resurfacing. This gives the county a relief now to make paying projects as you go, such as Lithia Pine Crest and Van Dyke, now attainable, and debt financing unnecessary. Be careful not to overreach in this economy. A term longer than 10 years will very likely draw organized opposition to the tax, and this board knows that the tax will already be a hard sell to an electorate who is struggling with high housing costs, high gas prices, and skyrocketing food costs. The '96 tax vote was held in an off-cycle election with low voter participation. That won't be the case this time around. The laws have changed, which require the vote to be held at the general with a higher turnout. Opposing a 15- or 20-year tax would be much easier than a more reasonable one that is authorized every 10 years. authorized every 10 years. Please don't overreach in the term and the number of years. If the tax fails at the ballot this November, it will be 2028 before it can be put back on. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Jeroch. Next three speakers, Ron Weaver, followed by Ellen Lyons, and then Chris Taylor. Good morning, sir.
Ron Weaver for Winnis Jackson. I'd like to first of all ask you to please include schools, and here's why. The schools ingredient for these 220,000 students means that we'll be able to take the subject of the one mill that's being proposed for teacher salary increases of $6,000 per teacher. That's every teacher, new teacher, existing teachers, without differentiation. That one mill is for teacher salaries. The CIT is only for capital improvements, and we have $455 million worth of capital improvements to get at. We need a 20- or a 30-year term. Please don't fight over 20 versus 30 so we don't end up with at least 20 years to bond this money because we can't just save up and then build it. Save up and then build it, it's like saving up for a house and never getting one because you don't get a mortgage. You have to get a mortgage in order to get a house, and the same is true of this county. The big things that need to be done, those same fire stations that were just mentioned by our previous speaker, quite frankly, if we need five in the next year or three in a particular area to save up for each one, how many hundreds of houses are going to burn down while we're waiting for the fire stations while saving up the money for each one of those fire stations? Some of it will need to be bonded, bonded carefully, bonded responsibly, but we must include schools. We must take care of those 220,000 students. We must attend, not only however, to their needs with respect to capital improvements and facilities because, quite frankly, for seven years, the state of Florida short-changed the schools of Hillsborough County, taking the rate from 2 to 1.75 to 1.5 over eight years is why they came up in a couple of years ago with a half cent for air conditioning only because that was a desperate, urgent need for the health of our children. Therefore, that half cent for capital facilities, which half of the 10 years of which is gone, it was only for 10 years. They have not been oversubscribing. Therefore, if the schools deserve their share at this election with this referendum, I encourage you to do so. I encourage you to also keep transportation priority because if the state legislature, the House version, has overruled the governor with respect to all the money coming back to roads, and only half of it is coming back for repaving only, no new capital improvements. We need the CIT to carry the weight with respect to the capital improvements inasmuch as the House version in the legislature has chosen to give them back our $562 million, only half for roads and only for repaving, the other for a tax refund and a tax holiday. Therefore, the urgent needs of transportation remain the urgent needs of transportation, the urgent needs of safety for those school kids, the urgent needs for capital improvements to the tune of $455 million for our schools. You ride by those schools, you ride in those new neighborhoods. The desperate need for schools in that area are capital improvements. The CIT is for capital improvements. Please leave in the share for the schools that were voted on by the people of Hillsborough County.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Next three speakers, Ellen Lyons, followed by Chris Taylor, and then Joseph Robinson. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ellen Lyons, and I am Vice President of Advocacy for the Hillsborough County PTA. PTA is the oldest, largest child advocacy organization in the United States. You probably know us from school fundraisers and bake sales, but we actually advocate for full education funding, and that's what I'm here to do today. PTA is organized at the county level, but we also have local units at about just under 200 local schools. We represent a lot of parents and families, and we work to bring family engagement in schools. Our volunteers have helped keep schools running for many years, and we really, we feel part of the school district. We support including funding for education in the proposed renewed Community Investment Tax. The Community Investment Tax has already done wonders for our district, and there's no reason not to set aside a portion for education in the renewed CIT. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Chris Taylor, followed by Joseph Robinson, and then Dr. James Davison. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Chris Taylor, and I wear a lot of hats in this community. I'm the Vice President of Corporate Strategies for a NASDAQ public company located here in Tampa, but today I am wearing my hat as the Board Chair of the Hillsborough Education Foundation, an organization committed to strengthening public education and empowering students and teachers to succeed since 1987. Since its approval by voters in September 1996, the Community Investment Tax has played a crucial role in supporting essential projects across our county. It is a commitment that we all made to ourselves and future generations. The CIT has been an incredible success for Hillsborough County, and to continue, the Commission is correct that eventually it will have to put in front of voters in here in Hillsborough County. Unfortunately, there have been discussions about removing schools entirely from CIT renewal. I won't mince words. Removing schools from CIT would be a terrible mistake, and it would undermine our community's progress for decades to come. There is nothing that fits Hillsborough County community more than Hillsborough County schools. We need to realize that public education is not an expense. It's an investment in our collective future. Our schools mold leaders, innovators, workers. Removing schools from the CIT would accomplish just one thing: weakening Hillsborough County schools. I strongly urge the County Commission to think long-term, and let's keep schools included in the CIT. It's crucial for Tampa Bay's workforce, economy, and communities. Together, let's ensure that education remains a top priority. The school district's need for these tax proceeds is genuine and benefits all of us here in Hillsborough County community. Now I'm going to take off my Hillsborough Education Foundation hat and put on my Chris Taylor, citizen of Hillsborough County. I have no kids in the school system. I pay a whole lot in taxes. The concept here is baffling to me. We're going to have this tax on the bill, and the idea that we're going to remove schools so you're going to go back to your constituents and say, hey, I'm still going to tax you, but I'm going to defund public schools because I think that is positive for our community. Thank you very much for your time and willingness to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Joseph Robinson, followed by Dr. James Davison, and then Gina Grimes.
Good morning, County Commissioner. I'm getting old, but I'm back. A fiscal conservative, a businessman, a licensed professional engineer, and a house divided amongst itself shall fail and fall. However, speaking as a private citizen, as I serve in a lot of different things, the Tampa Chamber urges schools to be included in sales tax renewal. This is a sales tax, not an avalon tax. Sales tax, a lot of people coming down here, vacation, spring break, paying this tax. Not a lot of people stay here. It's not avalon. City of Tampa encourages CIT renewal. This is a renewal. City of Tampa Tarras encourages renewal. City of Plant City encourages renewal, as well as numerous other entities encourage renewal of this CIT. That's recommended by the County Administrator, Bonnie Wise, in her 2029 memo. A restriction provided that the referendum would not be on the ballot unless the county and all participating entities have signed an interlocal agreement for distribution of CIT funds and have adopted a list of projects to be funded for the first five years. Must be done. You don't do that, you're headed for doom. Finally, if the fumble used to get the CIT tax passed in 1990 is not done again, it will fail again. You've got to use everybody. It ain't passing. Why? The school system represents 40,000 voters of teachers. You disrespect the teachers in this county, and you will go down. You will not be re-elected. You will not get anything passed. Keep playing with the teachers. School district is a large voting block, and they're all over the place with party affiliates, very well-connected, and they vote. Now play with the teachers. Play with the school district if you want to. Roll the dice. Because if you're a rookie up here, you may not know that. But if you've been here as long as the chairman, you'd know that. Finally, any existing county facilities must be maintained by the county. How would that be done if there's no CIT tax? Where y'all going to get the money from? I'd rather see a CIT sales tax than an avalon tax from the county, and I'm willing to take an avalon tax from the school board to pay teachers, to pay teachers. Quit playing games because the school board wants to put a tax on it at the same time you do. This fails, you've got to wait two years by Florida law to bring it back. Keep playing with this, and you will go down because 40,000 voices, 40,000-plus registered voters from Hillsborough County schoolteachers will do you in, and they're all over the place, Republican, Democrat, Independent, and no affiliation. Keep playing with these teachers, and you're playing with fire. This is not the time to play games. This is time to take and get your fiscal house in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Dr. James Davison, followed by Gina Grimes, and then Matt Spence.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Davison from New Tampa. Eighteen months ago, in the previous board, the CIT tax was nowhere in the plan for future transportation funding put forward by the county staff. Zero amount of money was in CIT taxes was declared available by staff in the last transportation sales tax, only 16 months ago. Last month, they told you there was $9.6 billion in CIT tax money available. Somebody's lying. That sales tax was defeated because they knew that this board and this staff had lied to the people of this county, and the people in this audience participated in that lie. They didn't tell the people the truth, and that has to stop. You're not going to get anything passed if you continue to go down and manipulate information and lie to the people of this county. You don't need 20 years to bond a tax. That's a lie. It's an outright lie. You don't need 20 years. You're going to get the same amount of money from a CIT tax in three 10-year blocks than you would in one 30-year block. The only reason to do that is so you can tie it to special interests and bond more money. School district doesn't need a 30-year tax. The sports authority doesn't need a 30-year tax. They can get the same amount of money in three 10-year taxes. How in the heck did Pinellas County do all the things there, and Pasco County do all the things there, and their one cent community infrastructure tax is only 10 years? It's a lie when the people tell you that they need this money for all this stuff, and it has to stop now. The bottom line is, is that this should be no more than 10 years. You can bond 10 years if you need it. Your budget is tied into the CIT tax, just like the school district is, just like the sports authority is. Do they need the same cut of the pie as they had the last 30 years? Probably not. Nobody's even looked at all of the revenues that are going to be available over the next 30 years. You're going to tell the people that there's going to be tens of millions of dollars in countywide taxes deposited in the county's budget when the sun shine, when the CRAs in Tampa sunshine in the 30s and 40s? No. But that's what has to happen. Just tell them the truth. Just for once, tell them the truth and see what happens. Pinellas County passed their last CIT tax by 83%. Anybody think that's going to happen this time here on this tax? Nowhere. No way. So just tell them the truth. That's all they're asking, and they deserve it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Davison. Gina Grimes, followed by Matt Spence.
Good morning, Gina Grimes. I'm going to change it up a little bit. I'm not here to speak on the CIT. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item G2, and that is a request for a staff report that was initiated by Commissioner Myers to provide, for the staff to provide a report as to how to provide water and wastewater service to areas outside the urban service areas, but areas that are already densely developed. And I represent Mr. Dan Fitzpatrick and his company Bravo Tampa, which operates the Burger King at I-4 and Macintosh Road. We've been working on this issue since 2017. As most of you know, we've met with you within the past year to discuss the best method to allow water and wastewater, wastewater in particular, to be extended to allow them to convert their septic to wastewater, and the reason for that is because of the high water table in the area and because of the septic overflows that they've been experiencing now for over a decade. So with the staff report, you have three scenarios that address this problem, and without getting into all of the detail about the various scenarios, before you've heard the report, it's our position that we support Scenario Number Two. Scenario Number Two is the one that provides very limited capacity, but still allows a small number of businesses and the schools in the area to convert from the septic to the wastewater service. So after you do hear the staff report on Item G2, we would request that you direct the staff to move forward to implement Scenario Number Two. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Matt Spence, followed by Isabella Sadoriga, which is virtual. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Spence. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer at Feeding Tampa Bay. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here to rise in support of keeping Hillsborough County Schools funding in the CIT. Though my work is in food security, my background is actually in education. My master's degree, married to a teacher, I'm the son of a teacher. And I know you have heard the numbers. You probably have them all in front of you. You have the talking points, so I won't rehash those. What I'll ask you today is to hear from someone who thinks is a strategist, and we'll address you as a strategist. Our goal at Feeding Tampa Bay is a stable, thriving community, and we know that the foundation for that is a solid education, is an opportunity to earn a living wage, to afford your own groceries, your own food, your own meals. We're here to work ourselves out of a job at Feeding Tampa Bay. I know that may be odd for two members of a nonprofit to come and address you, to say we would love to have less business, but that's why we're here. We're strongly in support of Hillsborough County Public Schools. We have 40 pantries in schools across this community, and that's not a food relief strategy. It's a strategy built on providing children an opportunity to learn without hunger pangs, without worrying about where the next meal will come from, to build a future for themselves and for their families so that they may then move forward and support others in need in our community. They might come back not as a recipient of food relief assistance, but as a supporter. So I urge you to keep education funding in the CIT tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spence. Isabella Sadoriga, which is virtual, and then followed by Brooke Ward.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Isabella Sadoriga, and I'm a student at USF as well as a representative of GNCLEO, a nonprofit organization dedicated to climate education and advocacy. I'm here today on an off-agenda item known as the Energy Omnibus Bill, or Senate Bill 1624 and House Bill 1645. This bill has a variety of great harm to both local government and to the greater state fearing a cleaner environment for us all. The bill would essentially serve the interests of major utilities and hinder progress towards clean energy, eliminate fuel efficiency standards for vehicles, and strip the term "climate change" from many existing state laws. Arguably worse of all, the bill would preempt local control over the transition to cleaner energy. I also want to emphasize the first point about serving the interests of major utilities. In the bill's text, it states that "utility companies are guaranteed profits with natural gas reconstruction and relocation costs. This encourages the implementation and use of natural gas pipeline projects, which take several steps backward in the goal of transitioning to clean energy sources." Not to mention, residents will be tasked with paying the burden caused by natural gas relocation. So this is not a bill that should be supported as it does close to nothing to improve the lives and well-being of residents, and would actually do the very opposite by prioritizing the needs and profits of utilities by raising electricity bill rates for residents. Also, the changes made to the bill by crossing over many mentions of climate change, energy efficiency, and solar is a huge issue when talking about the impacts of climate change on Florida and coastal communities such as ours due to excess flooding and more intensified hurricanes that have the potential for displacement of communities and many other impacts like food insecurity. On behalf of GNCLEO and many students at USF that have shared their concern with you, we urge immediate action on this bill. Luckily, as the Board of County Commission here in Hillsborough County, we're all in a position to help and change the direction that this bill is going in currently in the legislative session. Myself and for those I represent, I urge you to send a letter to Governor DeSantis and to the Hillsborough Legislative Delegation expressing your opposition to the Energy Omnibus Bill. and to the Hillsborough Legislative Delegation expressing your opposition to the Energy Omnibus Bill, in order to stop residential utility bills from going up and combat climate change impacts we're experiencing in Florida. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. We got Brooke Ward, followed by Jonathan Graham. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. And for the opportunity to address you, Commissioners. My name is Brooke Ward. I'm with Food and Water Watch and the Affordable Energy Coalition. I'll keep my comments really brief. There's a dangerous piece of legislation known as the Energy Omnibus Bill that has passed the Florida State House, most likely will be voted on in the Senate today. It has the impact of raising electricity bills further and taking away your rights as county commissioners to stop projects from happening in our region. Most likely, the bill is going to pass in the Senate today, but we would like you to send a letter to Governor DeSantis so that he will veto this legislation instead of making it law. Last year, county and city governments made a huge impact in influencing Governor DeSantis to stop another dangerous piece of legislation from becoming law. So your voices matter. It would be great to have your voice in support of vetoing this bill when it becomes law, or not when it passes, not when it becomes law. Let's keep that from happening and appreciate your support on this. We have a draft letter we can send your way that you can either send individually as public officials, or you could send collectively as a group, so help you out on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Jonathan Graham, followed by Todd Randolph. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Jonathan Graham. It has nothing to do, my comments have nothing to do with the CIT taxes, but I felt it necessary. Two weeks ago, I was not in town when the One Water was voted on, and I felt it very, very necessary to come back and talk about this one more time because it seems as though some of the board members are looking at $200,000 savings in areas when there's $80 million in savings that was just passed up. And the whole process that went through procurement was definitely a rush process for a $700 million deal. No one checked any references. No one, when they were talked about how fast it could be done, hey, we're really concerned about the speed in which it happens. No one even looked at the difference between the two people that were proposing, that the one that did propose it said it was gonna take longer to start and longer to finish when it seemed to be, hey, we need to get this started. So the whole process actually seemed as though there was other intentions involved, that there were people that knew people because there was no references checked. If you looked at the videos that were done during the presentation, and we're talking about a $700 million deal, that the presentation was 10 minutes. We do presentations all over the United States, and when we're talking about a $20 million deal, the presentations are way longer to get the references and to get who can, has the resources to do these things. But none of that was done during this process on a $700 million deal. In fact, when it was originally brought to the board and staff a year and a half ago, there was an hour presentation on half the size project. But it just seemed that there was something else going on with staff. If you look at the comments, hey, we don't need to check the references of these people with staff, and maybe even some of the Commissioners, we don't know, who may have relationships with the subcontractors that were there, if you look into it. I just felt it necessary because we're talking about a lot of money. When we're looking at $200,000 and we're letting $80 million in the speed of something go by on the biggest project that the county has done, something seems awry. And I want you to still give consideration to the staff and how it was procured. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Todd Randolph, followed by Angel DiAngelo, virtual. Mr. Randolph here? Is Angel online? Okay, we'll go to Ashton Maddox.
No, he did not.
Okay, we'll go to Ashton Maddox. Ashton here? Isabella Moiler, virtual? Ashton, if you're here, come on down, buddy. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Ashton Maddox, and last week I attended to speak with Commissioner Gwen Myers regarding Senate Bill 1624, the large and overreaching omnibus bill that has the potential to raise utility prices and force dirty energy projects upon our county. So now I know that county Commissioners do not have the ability to vote upon this bill. However, what you do have the capacity for is to send a letter to Governor Ron DeSantis urging him to veto the bill. Like Brooke said earlier, it is very likely that it will pass the Senate, and so we want to focus on Governor Ron DeSantis. This tactic has been shown to be effective as recently as last year. The bill effectively preempts local governments from having a say in how natural gas is both transported and stored, so local governments will then no longer have the ability to outlaw natural gas storage sites, even if they are being placed in commercial zones. So this is alarming considering that transportation and storage of natural gas is extremely dangerous with around 30% of natural gas infrastructure being prone to leaks. This can give issues to reproductive health as well as neurological damage. So this further encourages our dependence on natural gas for the upcoming future when we should be making a swift transition to renewable energy. In response to the ending legislative session this Friday, I can only urge you to make this a top priority. By this point, I would hope that my voice is not unfamiliar. Every meeting I've attended, I vouch for the switch to clean and cheap energy for Hillsborough County residents, and this omnibus bill goes against just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Isabella Moiler, is she on the line?
Good morning. My name is Isabella Moiler, and I'm an environmental science student at USF and a Food and Water Watch volunteer. I'm here today to address the Energy Omnibus Bill. These bills, if passed, would permit utilities to impose higher costs on third-hand to what can only be described as greenwash dirty energy. The urgency of addressing climate change has never been more apparent, especially here in Florida where we face the dual threat of rising sea levels and intensified hurricanes. These challenges underscore the critical need to transition away from fossil fuels and toward clean renewable energy sources. As a resident of Florida and a college student living off-campus, I'm acutely aware of the financial strain that escalating utility bills can place on individuals and families. Unfortunately, financing my education and rising energy bills are a significant financial strain that affects my ability to afford basic necessities and pursue my academic goals. It is disheartening to see proposed legislation that would not only perpetuate our reliance on dirty fossil fuels, but also burden residents with higher electricity bills. We cannot afford to continue down this unsustainable path. Therefore, I implore you to use your influence to send a letter to Governor DeSantis asking him to veto the Energy Omnibus Bill that passed. It is imperative that we prioritize the health of our environment and the financial well-being of our communities by investing in clean, affordable energy solutions. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I urge you to take decisive action in support of a sustainable future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Franklin Perez, virtual.
Hi, this is Franklin Perez. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello, this is Franklin. You can hear me? Okay, all right. I'm just gonna speak. I assume you can hear me. My name is Franklin Perez. I live in Seminole in Hillsborough County. Please rescind all pro-Israel resolutions you have made in the past and do not buy any Israeli government bonds. Enough. Israel is a Jewish supremacist apartheid state that has been committing ethnic cleansing and human rights abuses against Palestinians for 75-plus years as per reputable human rights organizations like Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, and Betsalend. And now you can add genocide as Israel is on trial at the Hague for genocide against Palestinians. Stop supporting Israel. Giving it weapons, stop giving it money, and condemn it for what it is, an apartheid and genocidal state. Many human rights experts refer to Gaza as an open-air concentration camp. The Israeli apartheid regime's Prime Minister, Benjamin Netanyahu, has invoked genocidal language against Palestinians in the Gaza concentration camp by referring to an ancient biblical passage in the Old Testament comparing Palestinians to Amalekites that must all be put to death, men, women, children, babies. The Israeli apartheid regime's Defense Minister, Yoav Galant, has dehumanized Palestinians by referring to Palestinians in the Gaza concentration camp as human animals. Niko Pelad, Israeli Jew, son of a famous Israeli Jew general, ex-Zionist occupation forces enforcer, and Palestinian rights activist, has stated that the Israeli army is the best terrorist group in the world. Ex-Israeli Jew Zionist occupation forces pilot Yonatan Shapira has stated that the Israeli army is a terrorist organization run by war criminals. At this point, due to scattered Zionists stalling occupier settlements in the West Bank, the only fair solution to the Israel-Palestine conflict is a one-state solution where everyone Jew and Palestinian has equal rights. That's what is referred to as a free Palestine from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea. All U.S. government entities should be pressuring the Israeli apartheid regime to move towards such a free Palestine. That includes the dismantling of the Gaza concentration camp. The refrain that Israel has the right to self-defense is a red herring. The real question is, does Israel have the right to use force to maintain an illegal occupation and apartheid state that commits ethnic cleansing, genocide, and human rights abuses against Palestinians? The clear answer is no. Under international law, Israel has the right of self-defense when it is the oppressor and occupier. While Palestinians do have the right to physically resist and defend themselves against their oppressor and occupier, the Israeli apartheid regime. Our tax dollars should be going back to our own communities, not to support unrelenting bombing and genocide in Gaza. No more money for Israel's crimes. I request that the Hillsborough County Commission not buy any Israeli government bonds and introduce the resolution to stand with Palestinians in demanding an end to the siege of Gaza, a permanent ceasefire, and an end to all U.S. aid to Israel, military, economic, political. Ceasefire now, ceasefire now.
All right, thank you, sir. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent? Motion Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried six to zero.
All right, Bonnie, I'll introduce the first item.
Thank you. The first item is Item D1. This is a public hearing relating to the purchase of the Windermere Utility Company Private Water and Wastewater Utility System. And George Cassidy and Hank Ennis are here to present this item. This is a public hearing.
Good morning, George.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. George Cassidy, Public Utilities. D1 is a public hearing, and this is for the purchase of the Windermere Franchise Utility. It's a water and wastewater utility system that serves approximately 1,000 residents in Northwest Hillsborough County. The purchase price of the utility has been negotiated at $2.5 million and represents a fair market value for the business. The purchase will be funded with the current water resources budget within the current water resources budget, and staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. We got five individuals that have signed up this morning. Brooke Ward, followed by Todd Randolph.
Good morning again. Thank you for another opportunity to address this commission. My name is Brooke Ward, Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch, speaking in favor of the acquisition of this water utility. As of the county's report, a significant amount of the assets currently in service for this specific water and wastewater utility system was considered as ranging from poor, requiring major renewal or repair, to very poor, which means it's unserviceable or obsolete. Public control is the most affordable way to improve failing systems. Public policy should encourage and facilitate public ownership of community water and sewer systems. Treatment, delivery, and collection of water are important public services that are vital for public health and without substitution. Responsible public operators are in the best position to ensure universal access to safe and affordable service. Public provision is in the public interest, and it promotes the welfare of the general population. So public control is the most affordable way to improve these failing systems and get quality, affordable water to our entire Hillsborough population. So we support county acquisition and approval of the Robert Seacrats Windermere Utility Company. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Todd Randolph, followed by Walter Smith. Mr. Randolph here? Walter Smith? Okay, Noran Dollard? Noran here? And then final, Kevin Lestergen? Okay, that closes.
Apologies for the delay.
Good morning.
I had questions. Pardon me? Kevin Lestergen? I had questions. I don't have any issues with the approval, but I did have some questions as far as what is the proposed increase in our water rate rates? Do we have some idea of what that's gonna be? I did see an email to several questions that were proposed, but the answer says planning two. Is there some definition of planning? Is that six months, six years? Is there some idea of what that timeframe is? Additionally, there is a sewage or wastewater treatment plant that is in the community. Is that part of the procurement of these facilities? And then I guess the last question is, how do I get these questions answered?
That's coming up after you.
Pardon me?
The next gentleman will answer your questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, awesome. Thank you. I guess if you'd have gone first.
George, I'm glad you knew you were the one answering the questions, so.
I figured as much. George Cassidy again. So to answer the question, yes, it'll be both the water and the wastewater side of the business that'll be acquired, and we recognize that the wastewater side is in really seriously bad shape. So we're gonna be putting a lot of effort to maintaining that until we can get our own system in, inside, you know, that neighborhood. So the utility rates, the current customers are about 70% of our rate. So it's less than what they will ultimately pay, and we've got a five-year graduated plan to move them up to our current rates, 20% per year for the next five years. So it'll go from, I think approximately what they would pay now is about $45 a month for a typical water bill, that would go up to ultimately about $55 or $60 a month. That's what the target would be.
Over five years?
Over a five-year period of time.
And how about his planning question?
I'm not sure I understood the planning question. What was the planning question?
What is the timeframe for acquisition?
Okay, what's the timeframe for acquisition? So after this public hearing, presuming that it's approved, there's a 60, I think, a 90-day hold time before we actually close on the facilities. So in 90 days, we become the owner, and we take 100% operation and maintenance responsibility.
All right, and then George, could you make yourself available if this gentleman has any additional questions?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll give you my contact information.
All right, thank you. All right, he was the last gentleman that signed up, so Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I have several questions, because I thought we were gonna have a more deliberate, I guess, or a more extended presentation on this than we usually have, but I was, I called Mr. Cassidy yesterday because I wanted to understand this item a little better, and I think it's worth it for us to understand this as we think about moving the urban service line and our water and wastewater systems in general, and costs and whatever else. And this package plant, as they're called, is a private franchise facility, and it was built when?
It's every bit of 40-plus years old.
Right, and it's in the rural service area, but the homes were not done to the standards that we have today, because I guess it was back in 1975. And so they were allowed to be placed close together, which couldn't service them with septic, septic tanks, which is what someone has to have now. And these package plants were, as I understand, even as I started here, although there, there was just this one left since I've been a Commissioner, that these were typical of what was done at that time. And so the item is for buying the package plant, which is $2.5 million, but I understand it's in really, and to buy the franchise, which is in really very poor shape.
So yes, ma'am, the purchase price includes the assets as well as the business interests of the franchise. of the franchise. So, when we look at franchise utilities, there's a valuation process. They look at just the assets, then they look at the business component, and I think oftentimes it's merged together so that there's a business element, the revenue that you receive for the services you provide, and ultimately the value of the assets. In this particular case, the assets are pretty much depreciated almost to nothing. So, it becomes a valuation of the business itself.
So, I know there is concern about the cost of the increasing cost for residents there. There's about 1,000 residents that we're talking about serving, but after we purchase this, the franchise, for $2.5 million, we are going to do, we have to do retro work. We have to really look at rebuilding the entire thing. Can you talk about that a little?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I'd like to go back to 10 years ago, which was about the timeframe that we began looking seriously at taking all the remaining franchises off the table and bring them under our operation. So, there were seven at the time, 10 years ago, and the chair will remember, we purchased East Lake Pluris and Pebble Creek Pluris probably about that timeframe. That was pretty much the first domino to fall. Since then, we've purchased three others, four others actually, that are in the Lutes area, and Windermere is also within that kind of enclave. The $2.5 million is the first entry. All of these franchise utilities have generally been run to exhaust the infrastructure. And when they were built, oftentimes, they weren't built to nearly the standards that we would require today. So, all of these have required we go in and make some major improvements. This one is no different. We're gonna have to go in and make some initial repairs, both to the water wells that are in place, and also the wastewater system, and ultimately, we'll make them, we'll connect everything to our system. I want to point out that I think there's a $42 million reference to capital improvements. That's not all for Windermere. Significant portion of that is also for our, the most recent, well, last year, we purchased Sunset Plaza. Sunset Plaza is nearby, and we're also doing some major improvements and connections to that one as well.
Okay, so, and I didn't know that, but I know there was 1,000 residents, because I had asked yesterday, which would have been about 42,000 per resident or so to provide this system. So, and this is the last system that's out there in...
Last franchise.
And we're not, we do not allow for these systems to be built anymore.
We discourage it every way we possibly can, because of experiences is that we allow these to happen, and we'll end up taking them over one day.
But do we, that actually, I thought we had prohibition or something in our...
Within the urban service area, you cannot put a franchise utility in place.
Okay, but we can in the rural, because this one is in the rural service area. So, we could do this same mistake again? I didn't realize that till now. Maybe we could have someone answer that.
A franchise utility in the rural service area? Yes? Would that be allowable?
We currently require either a package plant or a, or septic in the rural service area, except in some extraordinary circumstances, but generally, it is something that's allowed as a way to provide service in the rural service area.
Oh, so we do, we're still doing these and might have to acquire them in the future?
We don't really see many. They are permitted, but they're not a choice that is currently being made.
Okay, because, I mean, that would concern me. I thought we had, you know, we didn't have this problem facing us any longer, but if we're still allowing some, because I thought this was the last one.
It's allowable, but we're not seeing that movement towards that.
Right, I just wondered about what was out there and if someone could do it today, because it seems like an extraordinarily, you know, poor idea, because what the, what happens is actually all the ratepayers, because this goes on our enterprise fund, right? So, they're all, all the ratepayers are assessed to make this improvement for this quote-unquote "business" that we're acquiring this franchise. Okay, okay, I just wanted to go through the economics of it, because I think it's something for us to understand better as we do this, but I'll let...
Okay.
I'll move approval, because we shouldn't be having these private franchises out there, but I just wanted people to know, it's not just the $2.5 million, it's another 42 million, and that's just for 1,000 homes, and I guess a plaza out there. I know Sunset Plaza, too.
Second.
I got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Wustel.
Sorry, George, just one quick question. During our expansion of the water utility bills, even though it took me a while to get it out of the revenue consultant, I got him to admit that 50% of the increase was actually for new capacity rather than just increased current capacity. Would this be considered new capacity?
It would not be new, well, it would be, it would not be new capacity to the system. It would be just additional customers on our existing system. So, we don't have to build additional infrastructure. We don't have to build a bigger plant for them.
So, just be prepared, what I'm gonna be looking for in the next conversations is I also pointed out that we have longstanding policies, although never utilized, that CIT could be utilized for the expansion of water services, and that's the language that's there. And that means to me that CIT could be utilized to subsidize down 50% of those increases that we exacted on Hillsborough County's water utilities customers. So, thank you very much.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, no other comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, motion carried seven to zero.
Hey Bonnie, got a 10:15?
Thank you. That took us right to our 10:15, which is item C1. This is to provide formal direction for the county administrator and county attorney to take all necessary steps to draft an ordinance relating to the community investment tax to put in on the November 2024 ballot. I'm gonna give just a brief overview, and we do have several staff in the audience, of course, Greg Corodell is here, and Sam Hamilton from the county attorney's office to answer any questions that you may have. And Commissioners, this is a follow-up to the community investment tax workshop that you had on February 14th, and we heard at that workshop, there was a willingness to move forward and pursue our CIT renewal for the tax that will be expiring at the end of 2026. As we discussed at that time, this is a half of a percent sales tax that was approved by the voters in September of 1996, and it's been levied throughout Hillsborough County since then. It was a 30-year tax, and it can only be used for capital projects purposes, not for operating. It's estimated that 20% of the revenues are paid for those by, those that are visiting Hillsborough County. At the workshop, we provided information on the statutory requirements of the tax, the collection history, and how the proceeds were spent. We are not gonna go through all that again today, but it is included in your agenda backup if you have any questions. At that time, you heard from the mayors of the three cities where they shared the importance of the revenue stream, and they have reiterated their support for the tax extension, and that is included in your agenda package. We've also received a request from the school district to present their utilization of the CIT and their upcoming needs. Their information is also included in your backup, and they are available today to provide a brief presentation. I thought it might be helpful to just quickly review the timetable. There we go. And just today is where you would be authorizing the county administration and the county attorney's office to take the steps to draft the ordinance, and that would be presented to you at your April 3rd board meeting. And then, at the April 3rd meeting, is when the specifics would all need to be buttoned up and clarified so that the ordinance could be advertised for an April 17th public hearing. And that would include duration, participants, and any other requirements you would want to include at that time. The timetable allows us to meet all statutory requirements and provides ample opportunity for public comment along the way. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Also, the staff is here. Otherwise, if it is the board's will and deems it appropriate, Superintendent Van Ayers is here with a brief presentation.
Okay, before we go into board discussion, I'm gonna give the superintendent a few minutes to say a few words, and then we'll go into board discussion. Good morning.
Commissioners, Ms. Wise, first off, I want to thank the county, the commissioners. We have an outstanding partnership and working together, and look forward to our future working together. Wanted to spend a few minutes today just outlining some of our CIT spendings over the last, since 1996. If we could pull up the PowerPoint. So, you could see since 1996, the community investment tax has invested over $655 million into Hillsborough County public schools. The CIT has played an indispensable role in supporting the educational needs of our growing community, and we believe its continuation is vital for the prosperity of our students and schools. If we go to the next slide. Of that 655 million, just to break down since 1996, you can see $413 million of that towards facility. So, what the public like to get out there is, our new schools, Riverview High School, Shields Middle School, Davis Elementary School, are all built on community investment tax dollars. Renovations and remodels, you can see some of our schools there, Jefferson Plant City, Brandon, Tampa Bay Tech, $176.8 million in renovations and remodels. So, majority of our funds of the 655 million go to our facilities between new school construction and renovations and remodels. Next slide. Some of our maintenance transportation highlights, so some of the other dollars, Commissioners, that were spent around transportation, you can see we purchased new buses. This is within the last 10 years, 57.3 million. Major bus repairs, 15.8, and then a lot of our maintenance major projects as listed as listed below. Without the support of the county, many of these essential projects would not have been possible. Now onto our future needs, and this is why I would like to spend just a little bit of time if we go to the next slide. So, this is our future needs over the next, over the next seven years. And it's important, what I want the public and our Commissioners to please realize is that the capital dollars we receive in the school district are based solely on our property tax values, different from our operating side of our budget that is equalized based on number of students. We receive dollars purely on our, the millage based on our property tax values. There's no equalization of funding. As you look across the state, Hillsborough County, as we compare to other school districts, we are a property poor, student-rich school district, meaning the number of dollars we receive for capital, if in comparison to other school districts, does not reach even the statewide average. And as you all know, we are a growing school district. What you see listed up above is our future needs over the next seven years. Starting with our two new schools, I did want to highlight, we have two awesome schools that are gonna open in '25, so we have our new Y-Mama High School that's gonna open in 2025. UUU it's called now, as we'll go through the naming process later, but in 2025, we have our Plant City Career Center that'll open August 25, as well as our Y-Mama High School. And then you can see with all the development that's occurring in Hillsborough County, these are our future, these are our future needs as we look to build schools over the next seven years. The estimated cost right now for all of these bills, as we sit today, projected total cost that would go through 2031, is approximately $454 million. What's important to know, for our public to know as well, we don't receive money, we don't receive state funding to build new, build new schools. We have our capital dollars, our mill, and then as you guys have been very helpful over the last number of years, impact fees. Impact fees is how we pay for new construction. So, our district projected impact fee collection from '26 to '31 would be approximately $210 million, which the additional funds that's needed for us to keep on that projected schedule would be approximately $244 million. This is where we sit as Hillsborough County Public Schools today, our projections over the next seven years. I do want to go back to thank each of you. This has been essential since 1996 to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We are a growing school count, we are a growing district, and this community investment tax has been vital to our, to our growth and to our success. So, I appreciate Hillsborough County Public Schools being involved in any future discussions and being included in the next iteration of the, of the community investment tax. Chair Hagan, thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments and partnership. Okay, we'll go into a board discussion. Commissioner Kemp?
Can I just ask, I just wondered, is it the, are we the seventh or eighth largest in the nation school system? I'm not sure that I heard that.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Yeah, we are the, so we're the seventh, third-largest district in the state, so it's Miami-Dade-Broward, and then Hillsborough County is number three. We're the third in the state, and we're actually seventh-largest in the nation. We've just passed, surpassed Houston a couple of years back, so we're the seventh-largest in the nation, third-largest in the state of Florida. Yes, ma'am.
And how many students?
Yeah, so we're over, so when I talked earlier about being a student-rich school district, we have over 220,000 students that are part of Hillsborough County Public Schools.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Harris, thank you. Thank you for being here today. Stay, please, please. Not gonna get off that easy today. One thing, you stated your needs. Can you state, just for the purposes of the public, what you're already getting, what the school board's getting through certex, where you're at right now, and what you're also going for in this next election?
Absolutely. So, I think what's important to know is that back in, to kind of rewind a little bit, back in 2007, so right now, we levy a 1.5 mills for our capital needs. Back in 2007, that used to be at 2.0 mills. It went from, in 2007, it went from two to 1.75 to 1.5. So, we used to be able to levy the two mills, now we only levy the 1.5. So, since 2008, we've lost a half a mill over the last 15 years, which approximately is around $900 million, and that was through the state, that was across all school districts in the state of Florida. So, we have our 1.5 mills that we receive. We also, in 2018, and thanks to, to the county approving our half penny sales tax, that is correct, Commissioner, we have a half penny sales tax that was approved in 2018, and that is a 10-year, and that one expires in 2028. Important to know that that half penny sales tax, we had about $1 billion in deferred maintenance. The half penny sales tax, those dollars are set to go towards our deferred maintenance. We've been through five years so far, and we have projects listed out six through 10. So, our current half penny sales tax does not account for any of the growth that we currently see in our school district commissioner, and that's why my urge for Hillsborough County to be included in that, in the next iteration of the CIT. And then we have the, of course, impact fees that we receive on our capital side, and then approximately now, after, with CIT, we still have those funds until 2026, as you aware.
But you can go for capital improvements in your, your half penny, correct?
Absolutely. So, our half, our half penny is allowable for both new construction and deferred maintenance. The issue we had on ours, when we went to the voters in 2018, we had that billion dollars deferred maintenance. We have projects that are, that money is spoken for and spent. As we have the next 10 years, the next five years, all of those projects commissioned are already spoken for, so we have no monies available within that half penny for our projected new growth that we're seeing, in particular, as listed in the Y-Mama and Plant City area. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, let's talk about, and I know this isn't done, I know that you guys just workshopped a proposed going-for-a-mill. And obviously, you understand, I think we fired enough warning shots over here for you to have an understanding of us putting on the CIT, which is a renewal. Yours is a new tax, ours is a renewal. And one, I'd just like to get your thoughts, I mean, I think you have a clear understanding that that does put us in a difficult position as a board, because you're adding a new tax, and I do believe that that affects voters when they go into a voting booth, but I understand you do have critical needs. What is that mill gonna be made up of, and you're, I know you're still in a workshop phase, and you haven't, but you could put capital improvements into that, correct? If you wanted to?
So, statutorily, that one mill is for operating, on the operating side.
Okay. And dissect what you think in the operating side? I've heard, you know, teacher raises, hiring more teachers, but can those funds be used for anything else in operating? Could it be used for paying administration, giving them raises?
Yep, yeah. So, our, so let me, so, and those are Commissioners, those are great questions. I might get those a lot. So, we have two buckets of money within our school system, it's our capital and operating. With our operating side, what I had, what I mentioned earlier is that operating budget is equalized. We have a funding system in the state of Florida, which is called the FEFP. It is a, it is a phenomenal system in equalizing funding for school districts. Here's the issue. So, that's on our operating side. It equalizes funding. So, if you look within the FEFP, we receive the third amount of funding in the state of Florida, because we're the third-largest school district. What has happened over time, what has happened over the last 15 years, is the state statute allows local counties to levy an additional mill for operating costs. What has happened over the last 15 years, as Commissioner Kemp's questioned around the top, the large school districts, there are five large school districts in the state of Florida. We are the only school district right now without that additional mill of... of Florida, we are the only school district right now without that additional mill of operating costs. So as I talked about, an equalized system for funding, what has happened is we have all local school districts that have levied and passed this additional mill, and that mill is on top of our FEFP, which allows other school districts to be more competitive to recruit, retain, and keep the best teachers in their county. So we are, right now, on a knotty level playing field. FEFP attempts to equalize it, now I've got the additional mill that's put on top of that that allows local school districts to do creative things on the operating side, you know, increasing teacher pay, getting the best and brightest teachers in front of our students. So that has happened in the last 15 years. So it has put us in this spot where we, I, as a superintendent, to get our, keep the best and brightest in our school district, I am in need of this additional mill on that, on the operating side. And then Commissioner Owen, on top of large school districts, where I sit right now, the challenge we're facing, we have over 400 vacancies right now in our classrooms. As I mentioned, that additional operating mill, we sit here in Hillsborough, Hernando has an additional mill on their operating side, Pasco just passed it last year, Pinellas has had it for a number of years, Manatee has it, and Sarasota has it. So we're in a difficult situation on our operating side. I don't take this lightly, I would not be coming to our taxpayers for an additional mill, but what I see, where I sit right now, is I am not on a level playing field on the operating side, because I have all these other school districts, Commissioner, that have added this additional mill, so they have additional revenue that they bring in to do, to pay extra for teachers, and to do innovative projects as well, you know, bring, you know, anything from extracurricular activities, they have just additional revenue bringing in. And again, Commissioners, I just, I don't take this lightly, bringing this, again, we are, we are not, so I'm clear, we are in the workshop phase right now. So I will take this recommendation to my board, I don't want to get ahead here, it'll go before my board in April, and then they will, you know, it'll go through the process with them.
And thank you for that. I think it's important, you know, obviously for the public purposes, you know, the millage increase, we actually debated a millage increase on this board, and we said we cannot put any type of millage increase on the backs of people in Hillsborough County. Tico's up, water's up, everything's up, and, you know, the confidence that I have, and I think a lot of folks from my district and the school board and public schools right now is not high. You guys came, and you weren't there, to your defense, I know you took over, but you tried to get a tax approved last time, it didn't get approved. Receiver ship was, we were within, I think, 24 hours or two days if it wasn't for relief act dollars. So for me, it's a tough spot to be in, to tell the taxpayers of Hillsborough County, hey, support a millage increase, and by the way, we're going to keep funding on the CIT side. To me, it seems irresponsible, and it seems like an unfair ask to the voters of Hillsborough County. Look, it's not that we're not for public schools, I'm a mixture of public and private, I believe in our public schools, I like going to public school more. But at the same time, we have to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars, and we can't just keep throwing money at something that we think is a problem, that is not getting mended. You all, just like us, and when I say you all, I mean the board, I'm not meaning you, Van, have to make tough decisions. I know there's been situations where schools have to be closed down, and those are tough, tough decisions. But we can't just keep going back to the voters and to the taxpayers. You know, another thing to really keep in mind is how high of a tax county we are. We went through this last time, that, the certex has been wound down a little bit, but the people of Hillsborough County are paying a high, high tax rate compared to most counties. So, you know, that's just, what I would like, is I would like you guys not to put a millage increase on the ballot. That would influence my, me to keep schools in the CIT. But another thing that I think we can do, and Ms. Wise, tell me if this is right, is we don't have to have anything off the top in the CIT. We don't have to have stadiums or school, but we can have them in the body of, meaning the bottom, we can have schools in there with interlocal agreements, and we can determine, you know, how much they get through interlocal agreements. Is that safe to say?
I believe that is so, that we could do it within the interlocal agreement, because as was mentioned, in order to move forward, all the entities participating would need to participate in an interlocal agreement before we put something on the ballot.
Yeah, yeah, because, because, you know, listen, I want to fund our public schools, we have to do that, but at the same time, you know, we've got a lot of critical needs in Hillsborough County, as you can understand. Roads, infrastructure, public safety, and schools are right up there with it, of course, it's the future of our county, the future of our country. So I'm very cognizant of that, but the problem is, is just the continuous going back to the trough for more, more, and more. And at some time, we have to say as a body, enough's enough. So, you know, my, I'm one of seven here, so obviously, other input is very important today, but for me, I would not be for having any type of capital taken off the top, but I am open to have it somewhere in the body, because it's one of those things, Mr. Ayers, that you just can't have it every way, you know? I wish we could too. I wish we, you know, we would, more millage would be great for the county, but again, we had this discussion, and we just can't do it on the backs of the taxpayers, so, but I do thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Van Ayers, thank you, and we did point out, you're here, you inherited quite a situation at the school board, and it's not you we're speaking to in our questions, it's really the school board over you, so just take what I have to say with a grain of salt, okay? Last year, the state passed HB1 and promoted choice even further. Can you explain to me very, as briefly as possible, the dynamics of how the school board interacts and participates with charter schools in Hillsborough County?
Yeah, so charter schools are contracted by our board through Hillsborough County Public Schools, they are part of our numbers for Hillsborough County Public Schools, we have a relationship in which we work together. So we will have oftentimes, Commissioner Wilson, we'll have students that, you know, start in charter, end up in our school district, Hillsborough County Public Schools, so we have a working collaborative relationship with each of our charter schools. We have meetings with them to ensure that we're on the same page, because in the end, we end up sharing students lots of times throughout the 13 years of education, Commissioner.
Okay, so you share funds with them in what manner?
Yes.
Is it that if the child goes to the charter school, they get a ratio of the property tax?
That is correct. They get, based on, it's all based on the FEFP, on the number of students that they receive, so we're a flow-through, the dollars from the state comes through us, and then we pass those back out through the charter schools, based on the same funding we get, it's just we're a flow-through, we receive those dollars, and those monies go to the local charter.
So that's the flow-through from the state, but if you get this one millage rate increase?
Oh, sorry.
Then...
They get, yeah, so, thank you, sir, thank you, Commissioner. So with that one mill, we approximate $170 million, approximately, if the mill were to be passed, about $25 million of that would go through charter schools as well. They do get their appropriate share, is how we define it.
Are those charter school teachers getting a guaranteed $6,000 raise?
So those monies would go through the charters, and then they make that local decision at their school on what they want to do. They could make a decision, Commissioner, and they want, they may want to give more, they may want to give less, but that is their decision at that local charter school. We basically take that monies, the 25 million, the proportionate share for charter, it goes to them, and then, Commissioner, they make those decisions on what percentage teachers, support staff might receive as well. They will make those decisions.
And what's the, how did you come to the conclusion that they deserved that amount of money? What was the ratios? Is it just of how many students? Is exactly that they have this X amount of students in their schools, and they get an equal percentage of the property tax?
That's exactly correct, sir.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that you just got in the job, but did the school board, or did the school board not just vote to close down a B-rated charter school next to a failing public school, and then have to reverse their decision in southeast Hillsborough County?
That was, that was a number of years back, and I, Commissioner, I can't remember off the top, there was a decision that was made, that might have been even three, two to three years ago.
It was before your time.
Probably 2020, yeah. And there was a, there was a decision that was made, and then it went through a process, and that school is now...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read into the record something from the Department of Education. This was a report comparing Florida charter school students to traditional public schools, and the subject was that the Florida charter school students consistently outperform traditional public schools. And the reason that that's important, that they would take that position, is that it's kind of damning to public trust. Specifically, when Florida charter schools compared to public schools for black American students, outperformed 89% compared to public schools. For Latin students, outcompared 93% compared to public schools. 82% overall comparison of charter schools outperforming Florida public schools. So when we talk about raising people's property taxes to a school board that's at the same time working to circumvent the by far outperforming charter schools compared to those public schools, we're not working against the best interests of the teachers and students of Hillsborough County, we're working to protect and make sure that who we're agreeing should get that money is working for the best interests. And as alternatively, as Commissioner Owen pointed out, just days before this very school board was put into receivership by the state, because of a bailout from the federal government that was halted, but at what point do we recognize that perhaps if 67, and I'm welcome, I'm open to a correction, but the number that I have is that 67 schools in Hillsborough County are at less than 50% occupancy?
That is not correct. So through our boundary change that goes into effect 24, 25 school year, that was part of what Commissioner Owen's comment was, what our boundary shifts we made, we'll have, we will go from 13 to zero schools that are below 60%, 60%.
Then I'll follow...
To zero in 24, 25.
Then I'll follow back up with you on these Department of Education numbers.
Absolutely, please.
Because if it's that large of a number, then it seems to me that we need to work on closing down and consolidating a service that is being outperformed by the charter school industry, and we need to promote the charter schools being more active predominantly in these areas that are filled with minorities, that, I mean, a 90 to 10 ratio is catastrophic, and this is an official Department of Education press office release, so these aren't made-up numbers. If there's a way to say, hey, we can be open for the school boards to be on there, I would understand that that could be in there, but for us to say that this was done 30 years ago, and we should keep it the same, needs change over decades, so it's not that I want to be unreasonable, but I believe that there is a statement here that the industry might be moving away from traditional public schools, and that's a fact that we might need to recognize. Thank you.
If I could, if I could address just some...
Quickly.
Yes, yeah, Chair Hagan, just on, our school board is very supportive of our charter schools. What Commissioner Wilson mentioned was three years ago, I mean, there was details to that. Every application and contract that comes for charter schools come before our school board through our natural process, and they have been very supportive of charter schools and following the law in approving charter schools.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cameron Zapata.
Yes, I would like to see the teachers get a raise, obviously, but without a tax increase. And I was also going to bring up that 67 schools here in Hillsborough County are operating at less than half capacity. That was the same issue that I wanted to bring up, and also, I was planning to bring up about the charter schools, which was already, that's already brought up for the same reasons. It's, you know, they're really leaving the public schools, going to charter schools, and also, that is my understanding, that the money goes directly for each student, there's a certain amount that goes directly to the charter schools, and not to the public school, but directly to the charter schools. And also, you mentioned that the schools do not receive state fundings to build the schools?
Correct.
And I know that there's billions of dollars that come in through the state from the lottery, and it's dispersed by the size of the counties, and we are, as you mentioned, the third largest in the state of Florida, and I believe we're getting about, close to $90 million, just last year, came through from the lottery.
Those are categoricals, those go directly to schools when they improve their school grade, whether charter school, regular public schools, when they receive an increase in school grade in the state accountability system, those dollars are categoricals that are earmarked for that, they are not part of our general revenue fund.
So Hillsborough, you're saying Hillsborough County's not getting the 90 million?
No, absolutely, we get the 90 million, but those monies and dollars, they go back, they'll come in, those go directly to our schools and teachers and staff for an improvement, when they, when their school grade increases, retains an A, moves from B to an A, when there's an improvement, those are dollars that are categorized for that particular purpose only. Yes, ma'am.
But the 90 million can be used for other things in the school?
No, not in my understanding, no, cannot, cannot.
So that, none of the lottery money you're saying is not...
Correct, correct, does not go into our general revenue operating dollars, it is for a specific purpose across the state of Florida. Yes, ma'am.
And what is, what is the purpose, you said, for, when Hillsborough County, it's showing that Hillsborough County was receiving 89, over 89 million last year?
Yeah, well, I have to verify that number, because what we're talking about here, these are lottery dollars you're talking about, that over the last 10 years are not part of our operating budget, there are dollars that are utilized that go right back to schools when they show improvement. So if I have a school that maintained an A, like I mentioned, or increased their school grade, those are incentive dollars that go to the schools, and are incentive pay that go to our teachers and staff at those particular schools, and that's inclusive of charter as well.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you for coming today. I was concerned, actually, that we weren't hearing about schools and their needs in part of this CIT, and I'd just like to say too, just for the record, it's not us voting for a tax increase, it would be us, you know, looking at it, being on the ballot, and the voters getting to decide, so whatever happens in terms of taxes or millage, and the millage is, again, that you're considering, and I don't know what the end result will be with that, but that is for operations. We know the difference here, operations capital, and as you said, every surrounding county already is using that millage and is paying their teachers more, and their staff more than we are here in Hillsborough County, because we're constrained by that. But I'd like to say too, that Hillsborough County, again, is the seventh largest school system, the third in the state. We are not a wealthy county. Miami-Dade, for instance, which has the same millage constraint of one and a half mills, which the state legislature took away, but Miami-Dade is looking at an assessed value of something like $400 billion, that's what they get to tax off of. We get $100 billion here that we have for assessed value. That means that we are getting a whole lot less money for that millage. Miami-Dade does have a lot of students, they're the largest, then there's Broward and us, but all the surrounding counties around us, but for Pasco, actually has lower, younger population, they're older counties, including Pinellas, Sarasota, Manatee, Polk has a younger population, Pasco has a younger population. But something like the assessed, I checked it out last night, they get $100 billion, basically $105 billion in assessed values in Pinellas County. We get the same here for a much larger population, and our student population is so massive, and the blistering pace there is so, that we've had, to contend within the county, but also in our schools, has made us really suffer in terms of supporting our schools in this county historically. I've dealt with, over my time as an aide and a commissioner here twice, where our impact fees were, in 2004, we were $196 per unit in impact fees in this county, and we raised it to match the surrounding counties at $4,000. I came back here in 2018 as a commissioner, and again, the surrounding counties were $8,000 and $9,000, Orange County, these other counties, in impact fees for schools, and again, we were just stuck at that, a $4,000 level. We have so historically underfunded and disadvantaged our schools and our education system here in Hillsborough County, it's been shocking. And the same is true of our county facilities, as I've said before... And the same is true of our county facilities, as I've said before. But I do, I want to make sure that the schools are included. I think it's important for us for the future to make sure that we have good physical structures and capital for our kids, but also competitive wages for our teachers and support for our teachers that work so hard. So I'm just, I'm very supportive, I think we should dedicate a portion. I also think, again, it's for the voters to decide, but I think we would disadvantage ourselves in terms of this CIT if we don't include the schools and the support that they have in the county for making sure they have enough. And just, I mean, the critical, the 10-year capital that you had, I mean, remember this. I'll tell you, back in 1996, when the CIT was first passed, these schools had portables everywhere. I mean, it was incredible. And just when we heard, just when the voters went to the polls, we were trying to get air conditioning for our schools. It's just stunning that we had schools all over the place that could not fund air conditioning repairs. So I want to make sure that our schools into the future are taken care of and supported. And I think we do need to go for a certain, they are one of the recognized, there's only, the only recognized jurisdictions that can have a set aside is the schools, the cities, and the county. There's no other, you can't just direct funds in any way, statutorily limited to those. And so I would like to see us, you know, set aside a portion that goes directly to the schools. And I think it's really important for us to think about that in the future, because we cannot, with the continuing blistering pace of growth, that cannot be handled over and over again, and the schools have been put in a really bad position by that. I didn't even realize, even with the new up funding, it's not, it's only paying for like half of the cost of what you see in the next 10 years. So I just think that that's really important, that we be thinking about funding our schools.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for a very thoughtful discussion. You know, we're investing hundreds of millions of dollars in water and wastewater infrastructure. Hopefully, if we agree on terms, this CIT will be able to provide us with really important dollars for our transportation infrastructure, and by that I mean roads and sidewalks, safety. Certainly, we know that we have major public safety requirements, and we're going to be investing money in fire stations and equipment. I think that, given the growth pressures that we all see in the land use meetings that we have regularly, if the schools don't follow suit in terms of their facilities, it's going to create a problem in terms of the future growth of this region. Most of the schools that are on the list, I noticed, are in District 4. I think that we all know that that's where the biggest need is, and it would make sense that most of the direction would go there. I don't know what the duration everyone is going to come up with is. I do know that the $244 million that they're showing as their need is a lot less than 25%, which is the amount that they're in there for now. So one thing I would mention to everyone is that we don't have to go for that number, we could go for a smaller number that would include the schools and take care of their needs, but not necessarily eat up as much of the hole as the 1996 tax. I want to just follow up on something that Commissioner Kemp said, and that also was said during public comment, and that is that this is not just a policy decision for us. This is a strategic decision. This is a decision about what is going to appeal to voters when they authorize, if they authorize this tax to be continued in November. And the schools, I think, provide a very major component. They have a constituency, they have voters, they have a real need, and including them, definitely, I think, will broaden the appeal of the effort. However, I would say to the superintendent that it is a very real concern, I think, of everyone on this board, that a competing referendum for millage at the same time on the same ballot may present the same strategic conundrum that I think has been pointed to. We don't want to have so much on the ballot that the entire thing falls of its own weight. And I think it's very important, as the school board addresses this over the next month before we make our final decision, that they understand that that is weighing on people on this board, that the concern of asking for too much, you know, Commissioner Owen said it well, a lot of fees and a lot of costs that go up this past year, and what the voters are going to be willing to take on, you know, is something that needs to be considered. The one thing that's really important to remember about what we're considering here is that it isn't an ad valorem tax, it is a sales tax. So visitors will contribute to it, you know, people that are just passing through, people that work here but don't necessarily live here. So it does broaden our base very much, and I think that hopefully, when the school board considers this, they will take that into account. I just want to close by saying that I hope we can come perhaps to some agreement over the next few weeks over, including the school board in some way. I'm a little concerned about leaving them off of the top, because I'm afraid that if they don't have some certainty attached to whatever their portion is, it's going to make it very hard for them to do the capital projects that they outlined to us. But beyond that, you know, I think this has been a very good discussion, and I'm sure we can work through the details in the coming weeks.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Superintendent Ayers for being here this morning. I've listened to all of the comments, and good and bad, but when it comes down to our schoolchildren, when it comes down to building new schools, closing schools, and having the opportunity last week to participate in a press conference of opening a new school, which would be just elementary and Stewart Middle School, these schools are in the city of Tampa, okay? I tend to just, and I'm coming from a different angle in my conversation this morning. My mind reflect back to 2018, when we had two tax on the ballot at the same time, and we all was questioning which one was going to pass.
That's right.
Which one was going to pass? Believe it or not, both passed. Am I correct? You don't have to agree with me, but I'm sure both passed, okay? Now we're in the same dilemma with the school board situation of wanting to bring in a new tax, not capital, but for operational. And we know, we hear every day about the number of teachers leaving our county, going to our neighboring county because they want a $3,000 or $4,000 increase in pay. Just think about what I'm saying. We want the best and the brightest teachers right here in Hillsborough County. We know what our infrastructure needs are in Hillsborough County. Because of my workshop on February 14th, we had the opportunity to see just what our county needs as well. I truly believe that both taxes could be passed if we get out and champion for both. I just counted, there are 14 schools in your presentation, Superintendent Ayers, new schools that would be built. They can't be built anywhere else, but in your district, Commissioner Owen, and I know you like to brag on your district, this is one time you can brag if you get 14 new schools, but you're not going to brag because you're not supporting it. And I get that, I get that. This is not the time to brag, but just think of the number of students. Because in my town hall meeting last night, that was one of the things that was discussed about children walking to school with no sidewalks, and they're walking on the shoulders of the streets, going to school. So we have so much when we think about our CIT tax, how it can really help our county if we can get this tax passed. So I'm going to make a motion, because one of the things that we should do today is direct county administration and county attorney's office for the ordinance. Am I correct? Okay. So my motion is to direct the county attorney's office and county administration to draft an ordinance within, to renew the CIT tax and bring back that language to us at the April 3rd meeting. So that's within the regulations of the statute, and then we can see what the language would say, and then we can discuss in more details how we going to maneuver, what percentage everyone would get, because without the ordinance, you cannot do anything else. Am I correct? Okay, I'll leave it there.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Before I get to Commissioner Owen, I do have one question, I guess it's probably to Mary Helen. The motion as described, is that broad enough to provide the board the flexibility at the next meeting to make a final decision on not only the school district, but also the duration?
Correct. We can draft, do a draft ordinance that has either blanks or options, or we can figure that out so that we're not cutting out any option for the board, but we'll just present all the options, and if there's an option that we haven't presented, you can add at that time when we discuss the draft.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and we actually have a lot more to discuss than just schools here on the CIT. So, you know, I'll just leave it with this, you know, I think that, Commissioner Cohen, I do think that we can address the school's needs with interlocals within the body, not off the top. I just think that there's a way that we can do that, it's up to us as a board collectively to determine. And I think just a lot of what I've heard from my friends on the other side now, it's just different political philosophies, you know? I think that in some cases, folks think that throwing more money and more tax dollars at entities or agencies that are not working, that are failing, is a way to go about things. I disagree. I don't think that's the case. As a matter of fact, I think it can exacerbate a problem. And to Commissioner Kemp's comments that we're just talking about the voters deciding on the millage, well, that's not really what we're here for today. We're here talking about the CIT, which it's to us to craft the referendum that the voters are going to vote for. So I think that's very important to decipher what we're here today to do. My advice, or my, what I would state to the school board, and I want to thank Van Ayers for being here, is don't go for the millage, I'll just say it bluntly, do not go for the millage. That would change the way that I feel about how we address the CIT. So I'll just leave it there, but I think, Mr. Chairman, you know, I guess I'm concerned about the motion. Not only is it broad, it's about as broad as I think you could possibly be, and I think that there has to be a little further discussion. I think it's a little premature motion, so I don't know if I can support it right now, and I don't want to vote no, because obviously I want to transmit and begin the process of the CIT, but I'm just, I think there may be more to it that we may need to discuss, unless we can make separate motions after discussing the CIT further. Would this close debate as to the CIT if we vote on it, or would it still be open to debate? For example, you know, I want to discuss, you know, what we're going to have to include in the CIT at the bottom, basically. You know, are we going to include stadiums, are we going to direct staff to, I would like to hone down transportation, to mean roads and not mass transit. So there's discussions that I think are fruitful, so I'm just a little bit nervous about just making a motion right now, voting yes on it or voting no on it, when that's probably not the intent of the other commissioners here.
I will defer to Bonnie or Mary Helen to answer or to clarify. However, I think it's important for us to continue the process toward having a ballot initiative this year by drafting the ordinance, and I think it, well, it provides us at the next meeting, when we actually have something in front of us, the time to do a deeper dive, for lack of a better term, on determining the specifics of what's included, of defining certain categories, if you will. So I would think that would be the appropriate meeting, but I'm going to defer and let you guys clarify or man what you think.
I'll speak to it from our perspective, and then let Mary Helen. From our perspective, that would be exactly what we would look for in the April 3rd meeting, and that this first draft would be consistent with the statutory requirements, and then you can be more specific later in April 3rd.
Well, then let me ask, what's the draft going to say? I mean, we've obviously had some time to mull over it. What would the draft, could I just get some direction on what the draft would state?
Correct. We would go by the wording of the statute so that we have all the elements that's required, and then we would have decisions that the board can make 10, 20, 30 years as one decision. What projects that you want to put into the CIT could be another decision. So as you have the draft in front of you, we can go by, and then those decisions can be made, and that way we can shore it up and-
Okay, and I'll just be real fast, and Mr. Sam, are you here somewhere? Oh, there you are. You know, just for staff's purposes when they're drafting, I think it is important to just have this brief discussion on, you know, the transportation portion of the referendum. You know, transportation is such a big word, you know, it encompasses roads, you know, infrastructure, it encompasses mass transit, and I think what's an important thing for us to really hone down on, and two things. One, this is not a new tax, this is a renewal of an existing tax. We are not doing what the school board's doing, we are renewing a tax for critical infrastructure. The statute, when I look at it, is just this broad statute when it defines. Could you just allude to that? I mean, it is all encompassing, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and there actually, there was something added well after the CIT was adopted back in 96, that even there's an allowed use for certain economic development projects. Just to give you an example, that it is a little bit beyond infrastructure, so that is correct.
Can you identify yourself with the record, please?
Sam Hamilton, County Attorney's Office.
Yeah, so I mean, what, from being an attorney, I know that with statutes, we can't add more, but we can take away some. Is that fair to say in this case as well?
That is correct. You certainly can't add more, but if the ballot, and then it's, you know, passed by the voters, if it's more limiting than what's allowed in the statute, that's what you live by. So you can certainly take away, correct.
All right. So I don't know with the motion, if it's, or with, if staff is going to maybe propose multiple referendums or leave portions open, because I, you know, I thought we were going to get deeper into it, but, you know, I would like, you know, just to direct staff that way, that, you know, what I'm going to be looking for are specifics on how these funds are going to be used, because I think it's important that the voters understand the difference between a renewal of a CIT versus a surtax increase for mass transit. I think that is so, so critical to get this passed, because I'll be honest, I do believe that this tax will survive or fail in my district, I really do. I think in East and South County, they will decide whether, I know the cities are going to be very supportive of it, and even the unincorporated parts, north and west. I think it's going to live and die in my district, and I know my district pretty well, I like to think, and I think it's very important that we will be carving that out to basically state, hey, these are going to be used for these critical needs, roads, infrastructure. If we need to talk about schools, let's talk about schools in the body of that. You know, I don't think that there should be anything off the top this time around, because we are, you know, the label this gets is it's just a stadium tax, okay? And that's not what this is, that's not what this is. This is, this is critical needs for infrastructure. And I guess if I can make a separate motion that doesn't have to do with whether or not we draft the ordinance, it's kind of related, so I guess I'll just sit back.
Do it afterward.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Willstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, just as, at the point of order, I didn't know if we were, I knew that we had given the school board some time because they, or the schools to have some time because they chose not to at our last meeting. I think we just kind of, are we just now in open debate? Because if we are, I feel like we've told the voters almost absolutely nothing meaningful on what direction we want to take on the CIT, other than, hey, let's administratively draft an extremely generic ordinance. So are we about, I know that- So are we about, I know that, I know in the past year, we've liked to have a sense of expedience about our meetings, but this one's so critically important, and our next board meeting is not until April the 3rd because of our, because of spring break. So we're, we're saying that we're going to present them with a generic one a month from now, three weeks from now, on April the 3rd. We have, I see it looks like some of Tampa Fire Rescue is here. A lot of people don't even recall, because it was inappropriately three decades ago, when I was 12, almost, when this was put into law, that this tax originally funded a lot of the fleet renewal for TPD and those departments. Can we have specific carve-outs? We were presented a budget presentation from the city of Tampa that said that their needs. Can we have specific carve-outs that protects them? Because in the unfortunate event that did, that this does go for more than 10 years, and it goes for 20, and then new commissioners or current commissioners bond out a ton of money again, just like the current one was done, then in 10 years, when they get a little bit upfront, are they going to be back begging for more fleet renewal and then being told, sorry, the money's been bonded away again? How do we put those protections in place?
Can I address some of that? Each jurisdiction is required to have a public hearing and do a five-year plan. So what is good for Plant City is maybe different, a little different than what's in the city of Tampa, and a little bit different than what's in, you know, for unincorporated Hillsborough County. But each jurisdiction would, would be required to explain those five-year projects and have the public hearing accordingly. And I would agree, something that in five years is different than what's going to be needed in 15 years, and that's why those, that requirement is an ongoing requirement. It is in the existing tax, and I would recommend that continues on an ongoing basis as well.
Yeah, then you would, you should absolutely reject that then, because a public hearing, let me be clear, is superficial on its face. And what you're going to get is a bunch of bureaucrats or special interests behind the scenes dictating, and you can go to that public hearing and say whatever you want, and then the money can still be bonded away, and you still don't get your needs taken care of. That's a, that's a very dangerous thing, if that's truly all that it takes, is every five years, we'll have a public hearing, thank you very much for coming, and we're going to vote exactly what was already planned against your interests. Thank you very much. That's another reason that you should be very cautious about proving anything beyond 10 years. And these conversations need to be had, not just, hey, we're going to wait, we're going to say nothing, April the 3rd, we're going to come back with a generic ordinance, and then there's going to be some inter-local agreements that are done, just like last time, very quickly. And then that's how we get boondoggled with $50 million of property taxes to the stadium? I mean, when do these inter-local agreements get finalized? Is this before or after the tax is voted on?
They're, they're done before we put it on the ballot, is my understanding. I could be wrong.
Sam Hamilton, County Attorney's Office. The, the existing CIT ordinance back to 96 had that kind of proviso. There were two requirements. The referendum would have not been on the ballot unless the inter-local was signed by all the parties receiving funds. And second, each of the parties had to have a public hearing and approve a projects list for the projects for the first five years. That is currently in the ordinance. Based on discussions we've had with the administration, that has been contemplated. I mean, ultimately, that's up to the board in terms of how the ordinance is structured, but we certainly have contemplated retaining that requirement.
For the first five years only? Or did they have to do it every five years? You said first five years.
Well, no, they would have to do it every five years, but the first five years is a condition precedent to the referendum staying on the ballot.
So then all that the voters that get to voice their real opinion on then is the first five years of projects, and whether or not that's attractive to them. But then after that, it's just elected officials that are voting on the projects. They don't get to have another vote.
The only other point I would make is that's subject to the ballot language. State law requires that the ballot include the types of projects to be funded. Now, they're general descriptions. I mean, for instance, you know, if road projects are included. It doesn't specify each particular road project. The particular road projects would then come up in the respective jurisdictions' public hearings for the, for the projects list. But it's always going to be subject to state law, and to the extent, as Commissioner Owen said earlier, the ballot is more limiting, that's going to control what the monies can be spent for, in a general sense.
Okay. And the only other thing that I would cover is comments that were talked about on whether or not we should include the schools, and it, and it continues to compare us to other counties. But the counties compared to have much lower sales taxes than Hillsborough County, and that variable seems to get left out of the conversation conveniently. So while we're dictating, hey, should we increase property taxes? Well, right, they also have much lower property taxes in other areas as well, and also lower sales taxes overall. So we're a very expensive county to live in, it's just that we've decided to designate money through past special taxes into other areas rather than schools, so they have the latitude in their tax base to increase it in a nominal way. And I think that that's a very important thing that needs to be pointed out about, are we or are we not supporting the schools? We absolutely are. It's just that in this county, or in the past decades, we've chose to support other areas much more than the counties that were called in the comparison, specifically Pasco and Hernando today. So I still don't think that if, if we're about to proceed to voting, I, I kind of feel like this was a waste of time. Today should, we should have had a, a draft, a soft ordinance with loose language, and that's unfortunate if, if that's all that we're doing today. I concede. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to remind our, our listening audience that on February 14th, we had three mayors here from City of Temple Terrace, City of Plant City, and City of Tampa, who expressed to us their desired needs for renewing the CIT tax. Those were the elected officials that are representing those municipalities. And so today, when we sit here and say that not to support something or not to vote for something, well, those are your elected officials who presented us information saying why the CIT tax is so important in their city. And so I'm going to go ahead at this point, Chair, and call for the vote.
Point of order.
You can't do that. You can't just call for the vote. There would have to be a move to call the question, and then you need a supermajority.
No one else is in the queue, Commissioner Myers. So I'm just going to say, first of all, I want to thank everyone for their thoughtful and insightful comments regarding our needs, as well as what is politically palatable. Because to me, I think it's a balancing act between how do we address our needs and ultimately what can be approved. And lastly, I'll just say that I think Commissioner Winstall made some excellent points regarding allowing the public to weigh in. At the same time, I would point out that this is not a democracy. We are a representative republic, and the voters elect us to make those decisions. And all too often, that's, that's lost. Okay, so we got a motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And then Commissioner Owen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a great segue, Commissioner Winstall, on, on what you were stating earlier. And one of the big issues that I'm having trouble with and struggling with is the years. The 10 years versus 15, 20, and 30. And I really feel like just us as a board really have not gotten a full presentation. And if, if we're going to make, be making a final decision, I would like some type of really in-depth presentation made to this board on what the benefits are if we're, if we're going to be handicapped to not really get bonding, if we do 10 years or not. So I move for staff to prepare a presentation on the benefits of an extended CIT for more than 10 years. The presentation shall specifically address how we benefit for bonding purposes with an extended CIT for more than 10 years.
Second. Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Winstall?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, show me what, show me why we need, show me what needs to be bonded. Show me the project that needs to be bonded for more than 10 years. I, I want to see it. I want to see the cost. I want to see the cost of the insurance, of the interest that would be applied to it, just like what was similar done with the, the Ray Stadium over there. They, they got the project, and it looked good, and then they realized that, well, it's not 600 million, it's like 1.1 billion of unexpected expenses, because that wasn't presented to the general public. So I don't know why, and I've not seen a project that, that needs it for over 20 years. I would, I would love to see it, and what those hard numbers are to justify any conversation beyond 10 years. So I will support the motion.
Well stated about the raise. Commissioner Cohen?
I would just add that, you know, Hillsborough County maintains a AAA bond rating, and we should be very proud of that. It puts us in a situation where we basically have preferential advantage in terms of our ability to borrow money. We, we have an ability to borrow money that's, that's higher and, and better than, than anything in the private sector. So I would suggest that part of the presentation show what, what the AAA bond rating actually means to our ability to get financing.
Commissioner Kemp?
And, you know, I'm fine with having comparisons and understanding that, because I asked some of those questions and found out some of the advantages and important parts of bonding, which we now are, give as well, some security in terms of, you know, that a job will be able to get done and paid for, and be done, as was pointed out this morning, very well by Mr. Weaver, when you wait, you can have, you know, and you're not building a fire station, and then you have something burned down, or worse, some, you know, someone dies because we don't have the ambulance services. And again, like, that's another important thing at capital for the schools. I didn't even think about their buses, but they're really desperately in need of that as well. And it's eight times the fleet size of HART, our own transportation agency, which I was stunned to find out. But I also, not only the, to look at the advantages, disadvantages of bonding and what it means, but on that level as well, I think we can't forget those things by what we do when we don't build it sooner. And I'm sure there was some desperate needs back when that was done, not that, you know, we, we ended up not being able to have use of the money in subsequent commissions until very, very recently. But the other thing that we should remember about this is it's a lift. It's a lift, and the community is going to have to be supporting it on the ballot. We can't, this is what has changed. We can't put it on again for another four years. So if, if we don't come up with something that is supported, it has broad support, we can look at not doing it again for another four years. Now, the statute has limited us. Is that correct? Maybe confirmation, maybe by Sam? I'm not sure. Are you there? Okay. At any rate, that's what I understand, that's been said here before. So we should be really cognizant of that as well.
I'm okay with incorporating Commissioner Cohen's comments as well into the, to the study. I promise it's not rhetorical. I need this education on it, because it's a tough decision. So, yeah.
No, and I think it's an excellent motion. Thank you for, for bringing it up, because, you know, I've been told you can bond this, you can't bond that, and so any additional information will certainly help. Okay, motion, Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right.
Thank you. I'm just excited you're giving me a venue to talk about bonds. All righty. The next item is item B1. This is to approve the Hillsborough County Public Schools' request to disperse 25.9 million plus of funds to construct high school U-U-U. Adam Gormley will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item B1 is stated as a request to disburse 25,919,807 of school impact fee collections to the school district. The purpose of this dispersment will be to go towards the construction of high school U-U-U on West Lake, West Lake Drive in, in Wy Mamma. The 25 million dispersment amount consists of 20,65,946 of regular impact fee collections, and 5,853,861 of school impact fee interest collections. Those interest collections were put into a separate, separate account based on a prior provision in the impact fee ordinance that allowed that interest to be considered to use to pay impact fees for affordable housing projects. That provision has since been deleted, so we're recommending that that amount be dispersed to the school board and allow it to be used in accordance with the purpose for which the fees were assessed. Available for any questions.
I will pledge to the board. Second. Motion, Commissioner Winstall, Second Commissioner Cohen. No comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Thank you. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you. The next item is yours, Chair Hagan. This is item F1 regarding the Eltwood G. Simmons Good Government Award.
Yeah, and I would just ask if someone could make a motion approving the recommendation of the Good Government Award.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Winstall. No comments. Please accord your vote. F1.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Next item?
The next item is item F2. This is Commissioner Myers' item regarding the Veterans Advisory Board resolution.
Commissioner Myers?
I don't know if Frank's coming. But this is to re-advertise the position, to re-advertise the applications, I should say, and to waive the requirement that veterans who apply for this position be honorably discharged. So therefore, I move for approval.
Second. Got a motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Winstall?
So all that you're asking is that they're required to be honorably discharged? Wasn't, I thought that was already included.
Six years.
So what is your change?
The change is so it'd be only honorable discharge only, because they're veterans. The Air Force required two, I think the Navy was four, and then there was six years. And then also to have where the commissioners can make the appointment as well.
Which I also thought was in there. Don't we each get one?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. Frank Strong, Consumer Veteran Services. The actual motion removes the six-year requirement for veterans to be a veteran for six years or more.
But everything else is in there?
Everything's the same, yes, sir.
What exactly, just because if, if, if we're saying somebody that was in, maybe they were in for a year, they got medically discoed. What decisions are the advisory council going to be weighing in on, I guess, specifically? Because, you know, no disrespect, but someone that was in for a year, what type of military experience? That could be someone that never even left a CONUS base, and they could have just maybe set in Medhold for a year until they were released. So I want to know what we're opening that up to, if who could apply and offer leadership on a veterans' council.
So that was part of our consideration as well, Commissioner. So what we'll do is we'll screen the applicants and provide that list of applicants to the board, and then you'll make a decision based on that veteran's experience, whether it be two years, four years, if they served in the community, what they did in the military. We'll, we'll make it very simple for you to be able to choose from, I guess. It doesn't prevent them from applying, but it would be your decision as to appoint them.
Yeah. I guess I'm just worried if the future commissioners were not someone who served for 10 years in combat situations, and they might just say, hey, it's a veteran, and, and not take that into consideration on a council that's offering advice on veteran services. So, you know, or if, when you retire, if it's not, you know, a jarhead that's up here leading the way, so.
I resemble that more than.
I meant that totally complimentary. So I'm just, it seems like this could be like a, was there someone specific that maybe missed out that couldn't just apply for a waiver in this one situation of the six-year policy? Did we, how many applicants did we get? I'm obviously kind of sensitive to the veterans' council, so.
For the record, Greg Horwiddell, Deputy County Administrator. And you are absolutely right in your line of questioning, and I know Frank and his staff have given that quite a bit of thought. One of the reasons...
quite a bit of thought. One of the reasons that we're recommending this change is we are having difficulty recruiting younger members with less experience. What we're seeing is a pattern of people not staying in as long, and we want to try and get some of the perspective of the folks who are not 20-year people or 10-year people. They might have only signed up for four to six years because six years you can sign up and and then leave. So that was the thought process, as Frank indicated, and by the way, he's not allowed to retire. Let's just clear that up right now. He does a fantastic job. So I think that this is something that we felt would open this, broaden it, make it more attractive to somebody who went in for four to six years, came out and now productive members of society. As Frank indicated, we will be providing some screening to you all so that you have the assurance that, at least from our perspective, that they are going to add value to this council.
Does the, does the, did the motion get a second? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I did, yes.
So, so basically, Commissioner Myers, I mean, four years traditionally is one full tour. I think that that's a pretty known thing. So would you be willing to entertain a friendly amendment of four years? And if not, I'll make a substitute motion.
So if we understand you're right, Commissioner, keep, the honorable discharge has always been a part of the equation. You're suggesting a minimum of four years.
Correct. Okay. Then I will, I will support the amended motion.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, I just wanted you to really opine on your position on this. I'm not a veteran. And I guess I want to know why younger members with less experience is more beneficial.
I think that's a loaded question, Commissioner. However, yes, our older veterans, with seniority, bring a lot to the table, but we do need that younger perspective. It's been a challenge for us. If we want to continue the momentum that we have at the park in supporting our veterans, I think we need that next generation.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, in Sun City Center, you know, I have more veterans than anywhere else. And I've got a guy who drove in General Patton's Tank Command. I think you know George Trump from Bella, so.
Yes, sir.
Get those guys on the board.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion and second. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Next one.
Thank you. The next item is item F3. This is Commissioner Wostol's item regarding an amendment of the Supervisor of Elections 2024 budget.
Commissioner Wostol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've provided all of the correspondence, including the correspondence that I sent to request to the Supervisor of Elections. It's pretty straightforward. Because of the new Florida state law, which I noted in my my letter requesting more information, I assumed that this was a result, we experienced a historic reduction of 11 and 1/2 percent of active voters in Hillsborough County last August between July and 6th and August the 9th. I also provide that, provided that backup that articulated those numbers. The supervisor has provided some addition that was actually even more helpful to substantiate this need for a budget adjustment. The supervisors and the constitutional's budgets are offered up. I believe the deadline is May the 1st of the previous year. Is that, is that correct, administrator-wise? May the 1st?
Yes.
I'm getting a head shake. Okay. But this huge drop in voters happened. His letter said October. I don't know. I think I saw him here if he's wanting to opine on that, but the historic's are irrefutable that in August, but I mean, August or October, whether my date is right or his, were several months after the deadline for his budget to us. So there's no way that this could have been predicted. I tried to ascertain some very specific data on what that might be, but it's a significant drop in the reduction of, my wife just, my wife got one on the day that I got home. I didn't even consider in this. I probably asked for too little thinking about it, but it was a sample ballot that I forgot that he asked to send out. His voter registration change notices, his mail-in ballots that would have gone out to all of those voters that would have sat there had this law not gone into effect, rating it based off of his own numbers. In 2020, the Supervisor of Elections budget was $15 million with active registered voters at the time of 864,000 people. At the same time last year, excuse me, at the same time this year compared to 2020, that number is almost 70,000 active voters less than what he did four years ago, except for this year, he has $3 million more in budget. To me, it doesn't make sense that if we had a significant reduction in the amount of active registered voters that are going to be receiving those sample ballots and mail-in ballots, that the minimum postage for a nonprofit, they are not excluded from that, is about 40 cents per postage, the cost to print, the cost to package those and mail those out. I basically did a, did a guesstimate off of the base value because of the data wasn't offered up. At this point, as you know, we have tons of, we have infinite public safety needs that are going on with infrastructure issues in Hillsborough County. There are 25 roads, little, little-known roads that the county is actually responsible for with inside the incorporated area. I provided you all with that data. It is the third-to-last spreadsheet. That's from a resulting, I think, settlement agreement in the 80s where we still maintain several roads with inside the city of Tampa and other jurisdictions, I think mainly now only the city of Tampa. I've applied them. I took the number that closely resembled a need, the project on 43rd Street in Hannah, which is also in a more economically disadvantaged area and needs as much improvement as they can get, in my opinion. That total project capital improvement cost was for $234,000. I applied this $200,000, which was the closest project in that line. That can be changed, though, because I did find out that I have to alter my motion in line with a state statute 129.06, which I will make that motion now. I move to amend the Hillsborough Supervisor of Elections budget and hold a required public hearing at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, which I believe is April the 3rd, to consider a reduction of his budget in line with the data that I presented you with today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Wostol. We are second. Second. Second Commissioner Owen. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, and thank you, Commissioner Wostol, for your comments. But this, to me, is similar to the UACDC that I had just before us last, I think, last Monday, last board meeting, in the middle of the year, asking for an amendment of the budget. Maybe this could be something that we can discuss at our budget workshop, because our Supervisor of Election does give the county money back after each election year. And now we're having, well, we're in the election going on right now, then the primary, and then the general. So just something to think about. I'd like to make a friendly motion if we can discuss this during our budget workshop.
Free to go back and forth, Mr. Chair. Okay. This is specifically a state statute, though, to regulate an execution and amendment of a budget of one of the constitutional's. It's there as a tool for us. And I didn't know, and, you know, it's kind of one of those things where if you read the tone of his letter, he thought he was making a point, but really what he did is show me that him giving back millions, I didn't know that that happened, and that's going to be a future item. Not, not only does it further prove my need that we need to reduce this just by this small amount, $200,000 out of 18 million. Overbudgeting by millions of dollars and positioning yourself as a fiscal conservative, self-defined in a letter, is not being a fiscal conservative. It's being fiscally irresponsible to allow millions of dollars to sit there and depreciate for an entire year while we have critical infrastructure needs that it could have been spent on now. So I think that the urgency for these projects, that these improvements are here, and it's a countywide issue, and I support, and I appreciate your support on the motion.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. First of all, I do see the supervisor here, and I think it would be a good idea if he was able to address this. I just, at a courtesy, at the very least.
I looked for him. I didn't see him, so.
No, I got you. I just want to make two comments, though, before he speaks. The first is that I have never seen this board, at least in the last 20 years that I'm aware of, maybe longer, reach down in the middle of a budget year and alter the budget of a constitutional officer after we pass that budget. And the officer in question, to your point, has been returning money every single year at the end of the budget year, unspent dollars. I take your point that you made, but I would, would turn, say it, I'd characterize the act of returning the money a little bit differently. The rap on bureaucrats and politicians is that they spend every dollar that they're given right up to the hilt. And the fact is that year after year after year, the supervisor returns money that is unspent at the end of the year. And he gets measured in, in the job that he's done in lots of different ways. One of the ways he was measured was by two successive governors who awarded him the Sterling Award for the efficiency with which he runs his office. So I would say that to take the extraordinary step of reaching into a budget in the middle of the year when the official in question routinely returns money to us is really treating him very differently than the way everyone else is treated. And my concern, from a process point of view, is that we only do these budgets year by year, and they are something of a contract between us and whoever is receiving the money. And I agree completely with Commissioner Myers' allusion to what happened with the CDC. I think the appropriate time to take this up is through the budget process. It, to me, that to go outside of that, to open up the Pandora's Box of opening every single budget in the middle of the year, I think would be a very, very dangerous road to go down.
Mr. Chair, free to go back and forth.
Sure, go ahead.
This is not opening Pandora's Box, though. This was a state law that literally more than doubled from 96,000 inactive voters last year. There's no way he could have foreseen this. It's not even his own fault, in my opinion, to 204,000 inactive voters. It's a more than doubling of the amount of people that he could have reasonably expected to have to notify on all of the pretty stringent notification mellers that he's required to do by the state. This is what you call opening up Pandora's Box, in my opinion, is me simply enacting tools that have been there in setting collecting dust. Needs change, times change, conventional thinking sometimes needs to be unconventional, in my opinion.
Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, I thought we were going to hear from the.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. Go ahead.
Supervisor.
Thank you. Craig Latimer, Supervisor of Elections. Commissioners, administrator-wise, as my are to stand before you as a Hillsborough County Supervisor of Election with a mission to conduct secure, reliable, and accurate elections for Hillsborough County. I cherish my right to vote, and I take my responsibility to ensure our entire community has that right very seriously. I'm here today because, as we know, Commissioner Wostol is calling for my 24, FY '24 budget to be reduced by $200,000. His basis for this drop in active voters is one that Commissioner Wostol called historic and unexpected. But while you, Commissioner, may have been surprised, I wasn't, and my staff wasn't either. As a matter of fact, in February of '23, when I submitted my budget, there was actually, in the narrative, pointing out that we were going to have changes in how we did maintenance to the voter rolls. So that shouldn't have been a surprise. We knew a large number of voters were going to be moved to an inactive status, and therefore, we would not be sending mail to them at all. And I didn't budget to send any mail to these soon-to-be inactive voters. This came about because of this change in the statute. And the change was that anybody that didn't vote in the 2020 general election or voted in any subsequent elections since then, we were able to send them what's called a final notice. So we didn't have to go through the three steps of mailing. We were able to mail that one final notice to them. They had 30 days to respond. They didn't respond. They were moved to an inactive status. An inactive voter is still eligible to vote. All they have to do is request a vote-by-mail ballot, sign a petition, or show up to vote, and they can do all of those things, and they're put back to an active status at that point. You know, one of the challenges that all election officials face is a barrage of misinformation. Commissioner Wostol, your allegation that we have ghost voters on the rolls suggests that some of this misinformation has infiltrated your office. We don't have ghosts on our voter rolls. We have people, people who have become registered voters only after their identity is verified by the state. Florida law also outlines a specific and deliberate process for identifying voters who may no longer live where they're registered, so we can maintain the most up-to-date current voter list possible. A significant change in the law reduced the number of steps, as I mentioned, so we didn't have to go through the three notices that we would mail out. In my reply to your letter, I explained my budget is based on much more than a simple accounting of how many voters we send mail to. Conducting elections for our large county is always complex, complicated, and it's most challenging during a presidential election cycle when the number of people voting rises dramatically, as does the number of new and infrequent voters who need more help and attention. I do take fiscal responsibility very seriously. My budget constitutes just 2/10 of 1% of the entire county budget. My budget also has increased at less than half the rate the county budget has increased. To reduce a constitutional officer's budget in the middle of a fiscal year, that would be historic. To reduce the money allocated to conduct a highly consequential presidential election when the world is literally watching, that would be historic and irresponsible. I respectfully ask that my budget remain intact, and this board continue to give me the support you've shown since I took office, so that I may continue to provide Hillsborough County voters with the service they expect, deserve, and have been accustomed to under my leadership.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp, leave you have the floor.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cohen, I think it's important that we recognize the Sterling Awards that our Supervisor of Election has received. I didn't even remember that it was twice, but by the governor's office and in recognition of how our, this office is run in this county. Also, are you, are you now, or were you recently, the Chair of the State Supervisor of Elections?
I was in the 2020 election.
That's what I thought. Okay. And I just think the, we have had stellar elections here that we should be really proud of, how quickly we get our returns, how accurately they are, how accurate they are. It's been an excellent job. And, you know, so I was just kind of taken aback when I saw this. Again, there are statutory requirements, and those statutory requirements changed, as you said. You even anticipated that, and I'm not surprised with regards to that. I would say jurisdictionally, the constitutional officers really are independently elected, and, you know, for us to micromanage in between years, these budgets, I think, is is really inappropriate overreach by, by this board if we were to do this. And it also could impair, you know, the resources that our supervisor has to conduct these elections, which are extraordinarily important, a cherished right to vote, and in a democracy, and has been something that has really been, I think, foremost in people's minds most recently. And here, we are going into a presidential year, and these presidential years, as we know by the cycle of elections, is different than any of the other three years outside of the presidential year, as you noted in your letter. Last, in 2020, it increased by almost 62,000 more registered voters in the final six months. That, I, I know that it's really difficult for the supervisor to be able to process everything that you do on a really, you know, limited staff and a limited staff ongoing, because each election cycle, I know that you've been challenged by having to hire many, many people just for Election Day to person the polls in the early voting places. And these are almost pro bono jobs. I've certainly had a lot of friends, they were not doing it for the money that they would earn, retire. would earn, retirees, others, because they care so much about seeing that these centers are done well. But they need training. I know that it's been difficult to do recruitment. These are long days that people do during that, and it's just been an excellent job. And as well, I look at it also, as Commissioner Cohen does, you're returning money. It's because you're made sure that you didn't spend every last cent, but that you had the resources there if you needed them. And it's the really fiscally most responsible thing that you can do. If I'm not mistaken, I think practically every office returns money, every constitutional office returns money at the end of the year. And it is a, you know, this is, as you said, one of the smaller constitutional offices in terms of funding, so that we have gotten much more substantial dollars back from the constitutional, other constitutional offices. So I, you know, do not support doing this, and I just think it's creating an issue where there is none. And as well, I should say, not only did the statute change, but something else changed, and that was COVID. And all the people that were displaced from their homes, they stayed there for some time, there was assistance for that, there were, I think, as I remember, some record numbers of evictions. There have been lots of changes in where people lived. And so we've also had kind of that on top of the statutory change. So, you know, this is not something, I don't think, that is warranted for us to spend time on, and I think we should just look at our refund when it comes, by good management.
Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is being overcomplicated, and thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'm actually, I looked for you to speak. I hope that you would. You were given an opportunity to provide me with specific data. You can call them whatever you want. I specifically called them inactive slash ghost voters, people basically that were sitting there, that were not actually going to be on the rolls. I think that that's a pretty fair description. Inactive voters is included in your own letter to myself. You state that there's mal and misinformation. However, sir, math doesn't lie. Your own numbers prove exactly my point. This is very basic. This is a small percentage of your budget. You had, I believe, 870,000 registered active voters at this same time during the 2020 election year. You have almost 70,000 less than that right now in this year. The amount of times that you're going to mail people, send mail-in ballots, what you are referring to is Pandora's Box, an unprecedented historical, well, this is the governor's law. This is literally called the County Annual Budget State Statute. It can't be any more clear. It's almost like a joke that it's even being debated or being called absurd on its face. This is very basic. We have less polling sites, five less polling sites, I believe, based off of his own numbers than we did in 2020 that we're having to fund. And we have almost 70,000 less voters that are going to receive sample ballots, mail-in ballots, et cetera. This is very basic. I see no one else in the queue. I have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. In closing, for me, I want to say this is not about the supervisor at all. It's a process issue. And since being elected on this board, what I've struggled with is how we, the process of how we fund all the constitutionals. Why can't we get to and approve budgets that are closer to what is needed by the constitutionals? Then we can potentially put those dollars to work quicker at a lower cost. So to me, it's much broader, it goes way beyond the supervisor, and that's why I'm going to support the motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just, for just one second?
Quickly, we're behind.
Yes, sir. The numbers I've given back each year have varied from $350,000, $750,000, and yes, over $1 million and $2 million. So those numbers vary, and it depends on whether we're having special elections or anything else that's going on.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Please record your vote.
Motion carried for two, three. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
All right, thank you. Next, Adam.
Thank you. The next item is a staff report. This is Item G1. This is to receive a report from Development Services Department and the Planning Commission staff regarding the possible geographic areas for expansion of the urban service area. And Adam Gormley is here, as well as Melissa Zornita.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Today's report is in response to the board's request for some potential areas of expansion of the urban service area. Included in this report is a recognition of the need to identify funding sources for infrastructure and services to support those expanded areas, as well as the recognition that those areas do need to be, that those infrastructures needs do need to be identified before we, or recommend to be identified before we expand the urban service area. Here with Melissa Zornita, who has a PowerPoint report on the recommendations, and will be available for questions.
Good morning. If HTV could go ahead and bring up the PowerPoint. I'm Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. Just as background, this is, the report was prepared in response to Commissioner Myers' request. In addition to this report, tomorrow evening, you have a public hearing on updates to the future land use element, which will include updates including a new process for looking at expansion of the urban service area, and outlines in policy form the type of study that needs to be undertaken as we consider these new areas. Next slide, please. Just to recap some of the information that we've been going through as we've been updating the comprehensive plan, as we look out to 2050, we're anticipating over 500,000 more people in Hillsborough County and a need for over 400,000 more jobs. Next slide, please. As we look at breaking that down by jurisdiction, I'll highlight the, the second from the right is the one for unincorporated county, and this is population growth, and it's anticipated that the unincorporated county would grow by 39%, which is an increase of 393,000 people, approximately. And the next slide, the employment growth would be around 191,000 people. So that's a significant amount of growth that we need to identify locations for those people to live and work. Next slide. We've taken a look at the existing urban service area, including the three cities, and have identified approximately 49,908 acres that are available either because they're vacant and developable, there's nothing on them, or they meet certain indicators for potential for redevelopment. 65% of those acres are located within the urban service area, with 35% located within the three cities. Next slide. The issue that we have identified is that if you look at this map, the parcels are very small. There's not a lot of large acreage that's left in the urban service area for development, and some of the larger parcels already have entitlements, such as the Energy Industrial Park out on State Route 60, or some of the mosaic lands that pop up in the redevelopment category. So in terms of providing opportunities for additional growth, particularly of suburban development, there's not a lot of additional opportunities for that in the current urban service area. Next slide, please. This shows our population projections for the rural area, and you can see where, based on existing land use categories in the rural area that allow for one unit per acre development, some of the growth that's anticipated with annexations around Plant City, where we are already anticipating some of the population growth to go into the rural area. Next slide. We took a look at a number of maps. I've only pulled a couple of them for this presentation, but this is a map of the vacant and developable lands. Those are in orange that pop up. And what you can see is that in the northwest and north areas of the county, there's not a lot of vacant and developable land. Most of it, particularly the larger tracts, are in the Nona Sasa, the eastern part of the county, and South County. Next slide. We also took a look at the, where some of the larger environmental lands are, because those form sort of a boundary around some of where these expansion areas could occur. Next slide. The final, the result of our study was that we identified four areas for potential study for expansion areas. And I just want to emphasize "study" because none of these things can happen immediately. There are next steps that need to be taken for each of them. So I'll start in Village Residential Two area, which is in orange, and the RP Two, Residential Plan Two category that is in green. Those are existing land use categories that allow for up to two units per acre outside the urban service area. In order to develop at the two-unit-per-acre density, extension of central water and sewer, and other services has to be provided as a part of those developments. Those categories, we feel, have acted almost as an expansion area over the last few years, and provide an opportunity to look to first for expansion of the existing urban service area to, because there has been more study done on those areas, more engagement with the community, as well as more infrastructure planning has occurred in those areas. We would need some guidance from the board on whether you want to pursue any of these areas, but in particular, in these areas, they have existing land use categories that we could potentially alter to accommodate higher density should these areas be brought into the urban service area. The other two areas, the area in purple is the I-4 corridor, which is drawn intentionally broad to look at a number of areas that have been discussed over the years along the I-4 corridor, as well as areas that there might be the opportunity to jointly plan with the city of Plant City as they contemplate annexations. And then the Little Manatee South is the area outlined in yellow. Those two areas, because there has not been additional planning done in those areas yet, would lend themselves nicely for the expansion area process that is outlined in the policies you'll consider tomorrow night. They'll need additional study to understand the infrastructure services that are needed there, the land uses, and what the appropriate boundaries really would be within those larger geographies. With that, I'll turn it over to Adam to talk about the infrastructure options.
So, Adam Gormley, Development Services. Commissioners, the other item that the board had requested was, next slide, please, was identification of funding options for funding infrastructure in expanded areas. I'll first say that, as Melissa indicated, we believe it's very important to study those needs first before we expand in those areas and ensure that there's a plan and a funding in place to provide for those, for those improvements before or commensurate with growth. The options that are, several options identified for funding, one of them is mobility fees. We currently have a consumption-based mobility fee, which is based on average trip length and average trip generation. The other way that mobility fees can be structured is a plan-based mobility fee, where there is a infrastructure plan in place, and the fees are calibrated against these future-to-be-constructed improvements, or proportionate shares of improvements that have already been constructed. Some of the other options that are being considered are development agreements with developers, either singular or multiple, that would provide for construction of roadway improvements by developers with expanded growth. Further options include special assessments or community development districts, other mechanisms where the areas can be assessed to pay for some or all of the services needed. Also mentioned that the community investment tax, as discussed earlier, is identified in the report as a, as an important option that's used today for funding development infrastructure. And with that, I will move to next steps. We have a final slide with some next steps.
Yes, so we would be looking for the board's direction on whether you would like us to move forward with studying all four areas, one of the areas, and any guidance you'd like to give on how we should look at those areas. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa and Adam, for a very good report. I'd just like to say on the Baum and Riverview and the Wyomama area, I think that's something we can continue to study and come back into phases with the information, and I won't go all the information that is already included in the report. And when we look at the I-4 Plant City along that corridor, you can do a lot of retail, and what would be a great economic vessel for us later, once the study come back, to give us additional information, as well as along US 41, going into Little Manatee, as was shown on the maps. So my motion would be is to direct Development Services and the Planning to come back and do additional studies and give us a better update, and then how we can fund these areas with costs. We looked, we talked about CIT, but that has to be passed, so we'll wait to hear what information that staff will bring back based on the study. That's my, that's my motion.
Okay, can I just clarify, is that what they have included for future actions, or is your motion different?
Do the Baum and Riverview now, according, am I correct, Melissa? We can look at that right now?
Yes, our, what we included in the report was that the Baum and Wyomama areas could be eligible for expanding the existing urban service area. There is a process for that with additional hearings and community input, but we could move forward with expanding the existing urban service area, and then look at creating new expansion areas for the I-4 and the Little Manatee South areas, which would, which would take a longer, longer time, additional study.
About two years.
Yes.
Is that consistent with what you want to do? Okay. Okay, so the motion by Commissioner Myers, do you have a second?
I'll second.
And Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm disappointed to see that this has 100% to do with my district, so I find that very interesting, that this is where we're at. And for the record, I did not bring this motion nor request this. Could I have, and also Josh Biladi, I see you're here, Melissa and Adam and Josh, I'd just rather have you all up at the same time, if that's okay. Now, I guess, and Melissa, this is maybe for you first, when I, when I look at the backups, you know, one of the big issues I have is, obviously, I've been preaching on the commitments to roads and infrastructure in East and South County, and it looks like as we expand, this means more development. I understand the RP Two and the WVR Two, it's already kind of set up in a way that that makes sense. I understand that. But when we're talking about Little Manatee, and we're talking about I-4, you're talking about massive commitments to infrastructure, roads, and whatnot. Can you just allude to that, or what's been done, or what was maybe even discussed at planning, to how we are going to find a way through the budget? And it's why I want Josh here as well, because I'm assuming, Mr. Biladi, you've kind of reviewed this, and you know what's going on here, that I'd like to get your input on what this would mean for this board to kind of recommit and reprioritize infrastructure and roads in East and South County if we're going to go down this road. So I guess first Melissa, then Josh.
Sure. So what would be envisioned in creating some new expansion areas is that we would essentially have to masterplan those areas in terms of what uses could go where, and then what does that mean for needed services to support those uses? So we don't have that planned today. Today, those areas are planned to have rural, residential, and agricultural uses, so there's going to be quite a difference in the type of services that are needed, and we would need to explore, then, what are the options to pay for those needed services? And so I'll let the others chime in on that.
Yeah.
Sure. Yes, Josh Biladi. Thanks for the question, Commissioner. I think the answer is that we would definitely work very closely with Melissa and her team on that future study to analyze what the impacts might be and what the needs are with our current infrastructure, as well as with their planning team, to determine what kind of costs may be involved in the additional infrastructure improvements that would be necessary as well.
Yeah, because I know that we've still got road improvements to go, right, in East and... and/or specifically South County? We've got road improvements that we're probably behind on, is that safe to say?
Yes.
Okay. And, Adam, on the, you know, I'm going to do a motion after this one, you know, having involvement with the TPO on grants and all that kind of good stuff, you know, do you think that it would be good for us to inform the TPO board of what we're doing and to also ask for a reprioritization of roads and infrastructure in Hillsborough County to really focus on East and South County if we are going to expand this urban service area?
Commissioner, I think it certainly would be good to engage with the TPO board on this. You know, the reprioritization, you know, is something we want to be very deliberate about, so we are looking at new options to not necessarily take away from one area to support growth in another area, but I do agree that working, including the TPO, would be a very beneficial step in that there may be funding options that come through the TPO that could be facilitative to this effort.
Yeah, and I'm going to make sure the legislature hears loud and clear what we're doing as well, as they determine road projects for Hillsborough County. And on the, I guess, another issue I had is how this was brought here rather than in a land use meeting. For me, I feel like the appropriate place for us to have these discussions are when, Melissa, you're sitting over there, you're representative, and we're in a land use type of environment, and I don't know if that's appropriate for us to move forward into that. I'd just like to get your comments. Would it be appropriate to stay here in a regular board meeting moving forward, or should this be in the land use section?
Commissioner, I think that this type of discussion and this direction is appropriate to give here. This future issue came up at a regular meeting, so matter of course, we brought it back to a regular meeting. You know, I think that this would be a start of giving us some direction to look at things, and there will be many other opportunities for the board to keep tabs on the effort as it progresses, presumably.
Well, then, how do we pair it with the privately initiated ones you've already referenced? How in the world can we do that?
Right, so there are some privately initiated amendments that will cover, that are proposing to expand the urban service area. Those will be discussed and presented to the board on the 19th of March at the land use meeting. That may give an opportunity to, for further direction from the board, if appropriate, either moving forward with those amendments or taking those amendments and wrapping them into the effort that we're discussing here today. But yes, there will be another discussion on similar areas. The expansion areas are, I believe, within the RP, I'm sorry, the Wyomama Village.
Sure.
Planning area.
Well, and also Energy Park, right? Is that part of, or when with?
Yeah, it's a little different what they're asking for, there's not actually an expansion.
Right, okay. Right. This wouldn't have an impact on that, our decisions here on an expansion of the urban service here would have no impact on it, okay?
I think that would be separate, yeah.
But do you see my problem with it is that we're, you know, we're discussing, we're going to do these separate rather than pick them up together. I just think it's an appropriate discussion to have it in the same forum, but, I mean, maybe it's something we can work on with staff after the fact to try to, I don't want to, you know, split hairs here today. So today, what we're talking about too, we're talking about, and if I'm understanding the motion, and Mr. Gormley, if you understand it this way, is we are talking about kicking the tires on the expansion of the urban service area, understanding that RP2, WVR2 makes sense, but recognizing the challenges of Little Manatee and the I-4 corridor, and that we are going to receive reports back on costs associated, that's going to be a major component of this, right, is the commitment to costs and budgeting for East and South County in order to get this done. And I see Josh shaking his head yes, so that is what you're understanding as well?
Yes, sir, it's my understanding.
Okay. Okay. All right, well then, if that's what we're doing here today, then I'm going to support it, and, you know, with the caveat in there that, you know, we're going to have to really hone in on the focus, because if we're disproportionate on development, we should be disproportionate on commitment to funding certain portions of the county. And I'm just making a statement, that's not for you all, but that, I want to be very loud and clear on that. So appreciate all three of you all being here today, and thank you.
I want to, before I go to Commissioner Kemp, I want to clarify your staff's understanding of Commissioner Myers' motion. We're moving forward, and I'm reading on the backup, Wyomama Village Residential, WVR2, and the Residential Plan 2, RP2, we're moving forward with those, but staff is going to study, additional study, for I-4 and Little Manatee South?
Yes, sir.
That's correct, okay. Commissioner Kemp.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, I still wasn't sure. And this is just a technical, you said there's two ways of tracking the transportation, the road, trip length, and what, the other way that we do not use?
Is a plan-based for mobility fees, and that would be a fee that is based on a set of, identified set of improvements with costs identified, and the fees would be calibrated towards achieving that plan with each development having a share of that cost.
I've always had an issue with the traffic studies, as you know, because basically, it's, if it's residential, they count the number of cars that are at that residence that's going to be, and do a trip length calculation, and then, you know, create a traffic construct from that, whereas, which is less than the commercial, which they figure five or 10 cars are going to come into this business every day, or, I mean, every hour, every half hour, whatever. So you always have the commercial, the mixed use is always disproportionately impacted with all traffic studies to be discouraged, and whereas the residential actually brings in new cars, new cars, that weren't, that didn't exist there before. So I'm just, I'd like to know, like, kind of how this impacts it, because what we find too, is we're looking at the impact, like, the turn lane or something in the local area, but actually, it's the, all the cars that are lining up on all the major roads when they're going from, for instance, Brandon to Tampa, or Brandon to USF, or however, however that works. So I would really like to understand kind of how that formula, if it changed, because I'd rather have it be a planned-based thing, but is that just going to do like a little surrounding circle of impacts that are needed? And I just find the traffic study to be really, you know, not really representative of how, what the needs are. More than that, though, I totally agree with you, Commissioner Owen, that if we're going to do disproportionate impacts, we should look at disproportionate or proportionate funding for those impacts on those communities. But, again, I would really want, and I won't be here when this stuff comes, but, for once, I would like to know, like, per an acre, like, what are we talking about, infrastructure? Because once you move the urban service line, it is all of unincorporated county that is paying for that infrastructure, whether it be in their water bills, or whether it be in your property tax, or paying for it in the lack of quality of life that occurs. And we're already talking about this exploding need for fire stations, for roads, but also sewer and wastewater, and sewer and wastewater, and I think it's more tricky even, I mean, you know, we're talking about roads that you have to add lanes to, but then we're talking about having to dig up pipes and have a bigger connector that's there, and I'm not sure that that is put on, or to how it is, you know, put on to the community, but I guess it won't, I'm not even sure it will be at all if we move the urban service line and how that would necessarily work in resizing and providing water. And then there's the water pressure out there when it travels further, the lines for fires, for even taking showers, and how that works with our, I'm really concerned, and I guess we have an item next, but the water and wastewater needs, we all see the roads, the water and wastewater is in many times almost as expensive. As we heard this morning, 1,000 homes in, I guess, a plaza, but we're talking about $42 million in improvements that are needed, just retrofitting, and these are areas that already exist, and we already have 25,000 homes within the urban service area now that do not have sewer and wastewater. And so I'd like those to be prioritized actually first, before anything else, quite honestly, in terms of resources, because those were already ignored, both in roads and in sewer and wastewater and other amenities. And as we found out too, even our new impact fees for schools, like, we put it up to what the standard is, to what the study shows the latest, and we're still only paying for half of what we need in the next decade, as they presented this morning, which is just, growth does not pay for itself, it always is causing these impacts, you know, and then, I also have concerns about the Energy Park, that huge area that is, I think, 3,000 acres, I guess? Is that correct, 3,000 acres there, Melissa, right?
Yes, approximately.
Which is pretty much totally undeveloped, and a huge notch, it's already in the urban service area, and we're already on the hook for, you know, what we do there, and, you know, all our fees, all our needs will definitely be impacted and increased, and the, you know, we're not doing anything to, I need to know more about what we're doing to really price this out and make sense with this, because otherwise, I think it's really fiscally not responsible to move forward this way.
All right, Commissioner Wollstill, then Commissioner Cohen.
Hey, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I've been, I've really just been focusing on what the urban service area is. I talked to you about this, Ms. Sornina, and you can chime in, but correct anything I get off, but what I've deduced is that the urban service area was basically the birth child of Ray Chieramonte, is that right? And two others.
I mean, he was with the Planning Commission at that time.
And essentially, the meeting went, how about a line here? Well, how about a line here? And then I found out that this isn't even the actual urban service area, is that right? It used to be bigger.
My understanding is that when it was adopted in 1991, initially, it was larger, there were some areas of the Nona Sasa that were included in it that have been since pulled back.
And at one point, Wyomama and Baum, and then the state got involved and then pulled it back. So even back then, I mean, maybe Ray Chieramonte is a prophet, but he predicted maybe some growth there, you know? We get some pretty hard emails about planners, but the point is, is that it was always, it was always a made-up line. I've found nothing that said, even our own definitions on our website, the general idea of it was simply a management tool, which is smart. You spend a lot of money on some pipes and you, and some roads, you want to make sure that you maximize that investment for the community. It was never, ever, in any document I've ever found, set to be a restrictive tool that it seems to have been formed and grown into. I have found out that almost 30,000 potential customers inside the urban service area are not participating, for largely their own reasons and costs, with the urban utilities that are offered to them, which is something I'll be talking about in the next item. So I believe that other things have requirements for developers to pay for something if they want it, and I know that we've done a lot of work before three of us got here to increase those impact fees. If, and I believe that we now have processes in place administrator-wise that say that every couple of years, we're going to, there's no longer going to be like a flat rate, we're going to continue to study two to three years. I think that we've chopped it up now, instead of staying consistent, some are two, some are three, but is that, is that what we're doing now?
Right, they have periodic review periods, yes.
So we can, we have policies in place to ensure that we're no longer having old policies, Commissioner Owen has found some, where essentially, property taxpayers are subsidizing developers, we have things like that in place. I would say one dangerous thing I heard, though, today, Commissioner Owen, when we're moving forward on this, and this is your district's main issue, but when I heard that they're going to masterplan it, you know, I live in the West Chase area most of the time I've lived here, and it's a really nice, master-planned community, and it works well, and you have some different commercial in the middle of it, and you've got, you have a grocery store, which operates as like a nexus that keeps a lot of us there. We call it the West Chase Bubble, so it probably did dilute the amount of offshoot traffic to other areas. It likely worked. I just said, I know some people over there, some cattlemen, that have some property that have been masterplanned in a way that they highly disagree with, and so we just, when that's happening, we just need to make sure that, you know, while I support smart planning and growth, that it's not planners gone wild with this new land, and we're very eyes-oriented on it. So the urban service area is, in all intensive purposes, when you guys are making your decisions going forward, it's made up, it's a myth, it was there as a tool to help restrict growth, we've maximized that, we now seem to be getting depreciative returns on our investment. The one thing I would say that I've articulated before that I would really like, I think that we're being too narrow-visioned on our approach to this, I think we could be more creative, is that it specifically says rural, urban, and suburban is maintained. That's the very end of the site on our planhillsborough.org, it's the very last four or five words that we will maintain a rural, urban, and suburb, rural, urban, and suburban. And I really think that we should be saying, hey, we want urban here way up closer to the urban cores, so we can promote urban density for public transportation, and that we can be creative and restrictive of, if those areas don't already have RM20s and RM35s, that we can say, well, our vision is that they go in the urban line, no longer in the suburban line, which I think is something we should creatively get to, and as we're expanding this, maybe we don't even see this as an urban expansion, that this is only a suburban expansion, and these are, you know, some limits on where you're going on future land use. So just some food for thought, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Cohen, and then Commissioner Owen.
Thank you very much. You know, I think it's important to put a little bit of context around looking at this, because we're not really making this decision in a vacuum, there's a lot of other pieces that are at play. And in the medium term, Tampa Bay Water and Hillsborough County are investing in a new pipeline that is going to provide over, I think, an additional 65 million gallons a day to the South and East County region. And in addition to that, we just voted, I think it was last week, to put a down payment on a huge new wastewater facility out in this part of the county that's being looked at. You can't make those kinds of investments, I think, and not look for, we've already committed taxpayer money to building out that infrastructure, and so, of necessity, I think that we have to make sure that the ability exists for people to connect to it. And so that's primarily the reason that I'm supporting the motion. I do think, though, that it does augur back to the CIT discussion as well, the need for new fire stations, the need for new schools, all of this is going to follow the, this series of decisions that we're making here, and they're not one that's going to exist without the other. So I think it, at the very least, is responsible of us, our responsibility at this point, to start earnestly studying all this, because this new 65 million gallons a day is going to be online in 2028, and ratepayers are going to have paid for that, and... And it's, you know, it's there, we've put it there in the anticipation that more people are going to be living in that area.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm glad, Mr. Chairman, you cleared it up, because your clarification motion, to me, was completely different than Commissioner Myers' motion, so, and from what I alluded to and confirmed with you. So I still am going to support it. I think the RP2 and the WVR2, those make sense. It's the other areas. Now, Melissa, a RES9 is considered suburban.
Yes, in the plan, yes.
Yeah, and that's not suburban, in my opinion. A RES9 is not suburban. It can lead to apartments, it's not suburban. How do we, how do we go about changing that? So, well, let me back up. So these are, this will strengthen the RES4 opportunities in the RP2 and WVR2. Is that safe to say?
Yes, if that's your direction, we will look at, there are two alternatives that we could look at. Those land, areas have a land use category that's special to those geographies right now, limiting it to two units per acre. We could either look at increasing the density in those existing land use categories to four units per acre, or we could convert them, as some of the privately initiated requests have made, to the residential four land use category.
And those are primarily what, I think, in the development community we're seeing, right, Adam? It's not RES9s out there in that community. There are some, or could you just allude to that? I know that's a broad question for you, but...
Yes, in those areas, we are seeing a lower density. We are seeing, so there's two elements that come with that. It's the density and the lot sizes. We do see a mix of lot sizes. They are on the, they're on the more efficient side, more along the lines of what you get in six, five, six, 7,000 square foot lots. But from a density standpoint, yeah, we are seeing a lower density, right? I mean, right now, we're getting two units per acre, and what those smaller lot sizes and lower density does is it allows for other amenities and things to be built in the community, open space and other.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, I don't really want to open up the door to RES9s and apartments, and if we could be cognizant of that, and I don't know how to skin that cat right now, but I'd like us to be cognizant of that, because, and how we change that in our policy or in how we review things, because RES9s can be apartments as well, correct, Adam?
They can, they can, yes.
That's not suburbs. That's not suburban life, to me, you know? I look at single-family residences being that, but again, maybe I'm seeing it wrong. But also, Adam, live local, you know? What is this, what challenges does it propose, does that propose here, if we go this route? Go ahead.
Yes, yeah, that's an excellent question, and something that's been circling in probably many of our heads, is how do we plan for supportive, commercial uses and not open the door for a type of development that we, that we, is different than what we're planning for to support the overall development pattern. It's a tough question.
Are we going to get something back on that? Are we going to get direction from you all so that we can make a decision, a final decision?
Yes, definitely. I think that's a really important element of this, since it's so difficult to predict what we have planned and...
I can predict it.
Yeah.
I can predict what'll happen.
Yeah.
So, okay, so, because, you know, obviously, I've been a fan of growth when it comes to suburbs. You know, I, you know, I've seen the prior boards call it sprawl, but we replace that with big boxes and 1,000 windows, which is apartment sprawl to me, which brings in more density, it brings in more traffic. So I get it. I'm for expanding the urban service here. It's something I feel like we don't really have much of a choice on as we continue to grow, but there are some pitfalls here that we have to watch out for, and I know we've got the smartest people here, standing in front of me right here, to make sure that doesn't happen. But I just want all these things to be kind of on the record of me saying, because this is 100% my district, okay? I'm going to catch the heat. No other real commissioners are going to catch much heat from this, I am. So I wanted to be just very crystal clear that I am going to be a watchdog for the people of South County and East County on this. So, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Kemp, I'm going to recognize you, but we need to keep moving.
Sure. I'll just say that there are apartments and townhouses in plenty of suburban areas, in middle housing and things like that, and all it would take at any time is for a developer to come in and ask for, they do now, a future land use change, and, you know, a rezoning request at that board. So, I mean, but it, you know, you cannot restrict that, and by doing, I mean, you can do it for a temporary basis, but, you know, it's really, it is part of suburban fabric in many communities.
In closing, I'm just going to say that I recognize what we all know, that we live in paradise, and with every award, recognition, and championship, more and more people want to live here. Now, we've seen incredible growth, and as our report indicates, another 538,000 folks are expected to move to Hillsborough County by 2050. Will there be additional costs associated with that? Yes. However, what I'll remind the board members, I think probably Commissioner Kemp was the only one here several years ago, and I don't know, recall how many years, but Melissa said during a workshop that we will have to, and I wrote this down, either drastically change our infill policies and/or expand our urban service area to accommodate growth. And that was several years ago, that comment was made. Okay, so the motion by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen, no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Kemp, Sornina, and Kemp voted no.
All right, Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a separate motion related, though. I move for this board to transmit correspondence to the TPO Board informing it of the possible expansion of the urban service area, consistent with the recommendations of today. Further, a correspondent shall request the TPO Board to prioritize road and infrastructure projects in the proposed expanded urban service area sections over all other road projects in the county. This includes road widening, road paving, road repair, and infrastructure improvements in the newly established urban service area.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Wollstill. Any follow-up comments? If none, please accord your vote.
I would just say, I'll just say, first of all, the TPO only funds a limited, there's only limited resources there. But second, I would not support that, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of infrastructure that's needed that I'm not, I'm not even sure what you're saying, the new area, because, like, for instance, 41, which goes all the way down the county, but there's all kinds of other projects that I think, and those should just be done on a per, you know, on a basis of really recognizing and looking at it, not a blanket kind of thing like this. So I wouldn't be supporting this. I think in plenty of time, we can look at what needs to be supported, when and how, and do it in a measured, thoughtful, planned manner.
Commissioner Cohen.
I agree with Commissioner Kemp. I think that to foreclose the needs in the other districts with one fell swoop is too extreme a measure to take. I think your sentiment is well-placed, but I'm not comfortable signing on to that letter.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
All right, we've got two more items, I believe.
Yes, sir. The next item is, excuse me, item G2, sorry about that, is to receive a report regarding the evaluation of the possibility of providing water or wastewater services to develop outside the urban service area. George Cassidy will present this item.
Hello, Commissioners. George Cassidy, Public Utilities, and this particular item, Commissioner Myers wanted us to take a look at extending services outside the urban service area, maybe to areas that had a density that did not resemble rural necessarily. And so while there are a couple of areas that kind of fit this, this look and feel, the one that we really looked at closely was the McIntosh corridor between US 92 north to I-4. And so if you looked at that in a close-up, and you didn't know it was rural, you wouldn't think it was rural, because it is highly developed. So we looked at some connection opportunities, and as you probably know, and as we've discussed before, Strawberry Crest, which is on Gallagher Road, is already connected to County Sewer, and it has been for a number of years now. The county, obviously, with this being outside the urban service area, there are, you know, some pretty significant barriers to automatically connecting folks outside the area. But there are exceptions, and I've listed those within the background of your, of the staff report. There are a number of items that have to be checked before you're allowed, one of them being, is there a public health and safety concern, or is there an environmental consequence? And so for the Burger King that's located on McIntosh, they have a history of failing septic tank, or rather, I should say, septic tank problems. And ultimately, the Health Department recommended that they connect to County Sewer. Actually, the Burger King made a request to connect in 2017, and that green light exists today. So they had authorization in 2017 to connect, they have not connected yet, but they are eligible to connect. We provided them a point of connection, which is the force main that we own and operate on Gallagher Road that supplies or provides service to Strawberry Crest. And if we could get the presentation on board, here we go, here's the map. So it might be kind of hard for you to read, but in the middle of the north end of that map is Strawberry Crest. There's a green dashed line along McIntosh and then US 92, and that green dashed line represents a force main that would be built by Burger King to connect into our existing force main. So we give them a point of connection, they would connect into that. They could do that today. They've had authorization since 2017. They could do that today, and they're, and they're good to go. But because we were looking at that McIntosh corridor, we wanted to take an additional step. You know, what would it look like if other business interests along that corridor wanted to connect? And so we played a couple of scenarios, and in the subsequent scenarios beyond just the Burger King, additional connections require that we have to do off-site improvements. Off-site improvements being that long stretch, that long stretch of red pipeline that goes from Strawberry Crest all the way down to the Valrico wastewater plant. There's four miles of pipeline, four miles of pipeline that we would have to upsize to accommodate the additional flow. We ran a couple of scenarios. We chose to increase the size from a six to eight inch. We looked at that, how much more flow we could accommodate. We also went a little bit further, and we said, what would it look like if we increased that pipeline size to a 12-inch? How much more flow? For the six, for it to go up from six to eight, it would, it would allow us to probably connect a number of other businesses along McIntosh. The problem with all of this is, is that infrastructure improvements along that north-south line on Gallagher, that four miles of pipeline, we're not funded for that. We don't have funding to do that. So there's an allowable amount of additional connection that could take place to Burger King, and there's also a secondary application along Gallagher. It's a food processing operation. They can connect as well. They've got an application in, they've been approved. They can connect today, and it would not require any upstream or downstream improvements. That's option one. Option two really starts to be a heavier lift. Without having a lot of engineering details on it, I can tell you that option two is probably going to run us four to $5 million, in which we don't have the funding for. Option three is probably double that. So those are the options on the table today. I think it's a really challenging conversation to have, especially in light of, we're talking about moving the urban service boundary. We've got a lot of internal to the urban service area improvements that need to be made. You heard me talk about earlier, we've got new franchises, we've got new wastewater plants, we've got a lot of things that are burdening our rate structure. This is not included. So from a staff recommendation, the easy, the easy part for me is to say option one.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wollstill?
I think leaving that, you know, that exact map is a great point. It's, it's right on the edge of the urban service area there, and, you know, we have these artificial restrictions made up off of a made-up line that turns out didn't have much planning at the time from the planners that created it. I referenced it earlier, but maybe you can help me be more specific. How many people inside the urban service area, unincorporated only, because I have requests, because understandably, people think that, because I'm countywide commissioner, even if they're in the city, they think I make decisions for them sometimes, and I tell them at city council, but I was taken aback by several people on several roads in the city, much less the urban service area, in the actual urban area are on well and wastewater. So how many people just in our customer base in the unincorporated area?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And, you know, our septic-to-sewer program, which we launched several years ago, addresses just the unincorporated areas. It's not the city of Tampa, it's not Temple Terrace, it's not Plant City, it's just the unincorporated area that we serve, and there's approximately 25,000 to 30,000 homes that are on septic tank. And generally, if you're on septic, you're probably on a well, too. So if you wanted to look at, you know, that number, it's in the 25,000 to 30,000 number.
And that's, so that's 12, that's a potential 12% to 15% missing consumers on the product we offer, on the infrastructure that we offer, right? That could be, while they would, we have extra capacity at different areas, that would be toning down the averaged-out bill that we give to everybody if they had chosen to be on it, which we don't, we don't force people to hook up, correct? I want to make that clear.
That's correct, Commissioner. We don't have a policy of mandatory connection.
Okay. And also, in this, we're not saying that just because it's there, let's say, one water and running through an area, we're not saying in a developmental aspect that, hey, this is here, so now you're entitled to a RES9 just because water's here.
We, we're emphatic that the availability of water and wastewater does not dictate land use. Does not dictate density.
Yeah, because the utilities thing never makes sense to me for the biggest reason is that some governments, I even think maybe somewhere in Pasco, owns the electrical companies. Is that right?
Lakeland does.
Oh, Lakeland, okay, so, so 25% of the state is government-owned on a, owns that utility. But when we say utilities, we're just talking about water. But if for some reason TECO went away, well, we as the government are going to make sure, because 99% of Americans can't live without electricity at this point, in my opinion, we're going to make sure that they own it. So are we saying that if, in the event we had to own TECO, that we're saying, oh, sorry, you have utilities and you're not in the urban service area, so we're going to take your electricity away, or you can't build from there? That doesn't, that doesn't make sense. So the, the whole, if you're inside the urban service area, it's not mutually inclusive, because we just pointed out that there's 12% to 15% missing customers on our side of our utility system inside of it. But also, at the same time, it was never meant to say that if you were outside of it, that you're mutually excluded from being on that water source. So it's just a, we're trying to maximize what's there, we're not trying to be arbitrarily restrictive to certain folks over the other. And I think that that's an extremely important point to make. And again, just a final time, it's a made-up invisible line, and that's been confirmed, actually, at past meetings by our Planning Commission. So, thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, George, for bringing us this report. I'm going to move for approval of option one.
Second.
We've got a motion to approve option one, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner...
Do we have to receive the report first and then make the motion?
I think we can, I think we can receive and do it at the same time. Commissioner Kemp?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond, when you, 25,000 to 30,000 people in unincorporated county that are not on our system, but they don't all have access to our system either, correct? I mean, we are looking at giving Gibsonton the option to do that. They don't even, they couldn't reasonably connect to the system at this time. We've had people in here begging. We had someone in Town and Country thanking us through, actually, it was Congresswoman Castor, that got several million dollars for Town and Country to, you know, provide them. They do not have access. Plus, we have the other people we talked about around the edges of the city of Tampa that are paying a premium, that we also haven't, you know, are not providing water. But would you, I mean, of those people, the 25,000 to 30,000, I don't know if you know, how many are, would have access but are not accessing it?
So that's a really good question. So, you know, as development proceeded in the county over time, it sort of skipped over existing neighborhoods that were already on well and septic. So this leapfrogging of neighborhoods occurred over many, many, many years. To connect them now, you're right, there's, there isn't a line in front of the street. We would have to extend service into their neighborhoods and make the connection that way.
Which also, and then we have our very poor substandard, but going to be... Which also, and then we have our very poor substandard, but going to be, I guess, retrofitted, or I don't know how to describe it, but in Wy Mama and Ruskin, the low-pressure sewer systems, which have always been inadequate and have really hurt our economic development and our development in general in those areas. And those are quite a bill. And then I didn't even know about the, all the areas that were not getting county water and sewer, but paying a premium as well for that. I nuts.
So Ruskin Wy Mama is part of the, is part of the conversion program that we've got going right now, as well as Gibsonton and Palm River. So those are the three biggies that we're approaching right now. And as I mentioned to you earlier, why did we select those? We selected those because Gibsonton and Palm River wants central sewer. They want that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it would be a disaster for us to go into a neighborhood. I'll tell you what, I've been in this a long time, and people have a very close relationship with their sewer, their septic tanks. They don't want to let them go, and they usually don't want to let them go until it doesn't work anymore. And so instead of fighting it, fight now, let's go to a neighborhood that wants the improvements, and we'll do it there, and show that it's a successful program.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear that it's not like, you know, people are not connecting up that have access, they just don't have access.
All right, we have a motion to receive the report and for option one by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, we got A43, is that next?
Yeah, George, you can't go too far. This is to approve a proposed agreement with Oakmont Self-Storage authorizing the reimbursement of certain costs for utility expansion.
You got to be sick of me by now. And so it's, it's way past lunchtime. I can make this quick. So the Oakmont Storage Unit, so I've got to just explain that in the whole process of a development review and getting to a place where we're looking at the infrastructure, they submit an application for development. From the Water Resources perspective, we look at, is there service available? Yes, there is, check the box. We look at, where's the nearest connection, and we provide that nearest connection, check the box. Lastly, we look at, are there any opportunities for our system to benefit from this additional pipeline construction? In this case, at Oakmont Storage, we identified that that area, and this is a water main project, we identified that there were some water main restrictions, some hydraulic restrictions that would greatly benefit from a little bit larger pipeline size. So we asked the developer to consider upsizing this line from an eight-inch to a 12-inch. They agreed, they were okay with that. Part of that, obviously, is that we will reimburse them for that pro-rata cost of the increase of construction. So we did that. Going forward, they were approved for their development, and it really was a condition of development, for the most part, that they were going to put in a 12-inch line. I'll be honest with you, we should have, and we would normally have, hopefully have, had that, that reimbursement agreement, because we're going to pay them for that pro-rata share of the cost. We should have brought that on the heels of the development review process. We did not. Water Resources had that document, and ultimately, it sat on our desk, and we missed an opportunity to bring it for the board before construction began. So now, construction is mostly done. It's mostly done, it's mostly complete, there are a few little things outstanding. Total costs need to be identified. We're bringing the resolution of the reimbursement, reimbursement agreement to you to now effectively pay them for this upsizing that we requested. So that's the short and the long story.
So I had pulled this from the agenda. I thank you for the backstory. I think it was important to have the backstory and to understand it, and I'll move to approve. But I also, I'll just say, in future items, I really, I want to start getting a report about how we get on top of this, especially when we're talking about expanding the urban service line. How we get on top of prioritizing, just, we just decided 42 million, actually, 44 and a half million today for a neighborhood in the rural area. That's, that's a big commitment, but, you know, I don't think that there was a option on, in terms of that. But I'd like to understand how we get in, you know, ahead of prioritizing, not to take the purview of staff, but with, with the information from staff, so that the loudest voice out there doesn't, you know, take the system and get the, and get the benefits of that when other people don't even know. Maybe they don't have a lobbyist out there that, or someone else that can do that and get that benefit. And I just don't, you know, I, again, I'd really like to prioritize the areas that have been going forever without it and want it. And I've heard it for many years, even as an aide here, so I'll be asking that at future events, or maybe since I said it now, but my motion to approve.
Motion to approve A43, Commissioner Kemp.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, last items, future issues. Commissioner Kemp?
I kind of said what I wanted, but I wanted to direct staff to start to look, and maybe start with a report about how we might be able to look at kind of the equity and situation with this, to anticipate it. I know you said this one wasn't voted on and should have been, but, but even if we had voted on it, like, how do we look at the entire county with all those needs out there and look about, you know, fulfilling those or considering those on a, with more on our part as a board, forethought and planning about how we can decide which ones to prioritize?
Okay, Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. Commissioner Owen, you made a motion earlier, which I think was well-received, to have a discussion about the bonding process. And because we're going to be making decisions about the CIT at the April 3rd board meeting, I wanted to just get clarification. Is it your view that we would have that discussion at that meeting, or would, did you see it, that we were going to do it before then?
Well, I just want us to have, to get it before so that we can digest it and make a decision. Bonnie, what do you think on the timing of that?
Well, because we have a few weeks before the next meeting, it may be that I could update each of you individually, if that would be helpful.
Do we have a budget workshop at the end of March?
March 27th. We could do it then.
Perhaps we could, we could do it then as a group.
That makes sense.
Yes, yes, good spot.
Okay. No other items, we adjourn.